I'd like to call and order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, April 9th, 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is roll.
Rusado.
Here.
Etac. Stark.
Here.
Chancet. Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
And McFadden.
Here.
Okay, we do have the necessary quorum to conduct business. I'll move on then to the next item, which is obviously the reminder for everyone to use the microphone so we can get you on the recording. And if anybody from the audience is gonna address us tonight, please use the podium and adjust the microphone so it's up close and personal to you, so we can get you on the recording also. Item three is approval of the minutes for March 19th, 2019. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the minutes? If not, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Uer, second by Malley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item four is items removed, added, or changed. I know of none. Does anybody have anything? Okay. Item five matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. So if anybody in the public has got something they'd like to address us on for an item that is not on the agenda, please come up to the podium and give us your name. Seeing none, we'll move on then to the consent agenda. We've got five items on there. First one is ordinance 19-27, amending the official zoning map for 1430 Cherry Drive and 1360 Geezy Road, City of Batavia's applicant. Item B is ordinance 19-047-R, authorizing to purchase one 2019 Ford F-250 truck from Landmark Ford Incorporated for $36,613. That item is within the budget that's been approved by the city council. All those are requesting permits for the IDOT, from IDOT, for closures for various roadways throughout the 2019 special event season. Item D is resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance 19-29, declaring surplus property. That memo came out from Scott Haynes. Item E is resolution 19-36-R, authorizing the purchase of three police department patrol vehicles. That is also within the approved budget by the city council. Anybody have any comments, questions on the consent agenda as read?
No. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by, who did it?
No. One of these guys.
Sir, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those will run the consent agenda also. Item seven, resolution 19-49-R, authorization for creation of the City of Batavia Gateway Improvement Program. Alvin Stark.
Thank you. As the committee of the whole probably remembers back on March 12th, staff brought this to our attention, this gateway improvement program, and we told Laura that in concept, we generally thought this was a great idea, and to put some verbiage around it. And so she and Chris have put it together. Laura is running a little late. We just got back from Springfield, so I know that she knows a lot about this, but Chris put it together, so he's going to present it to us.
Thank you, Alvin Stark. Yes, when we did meet on the 12th, we presented this proposed program at the time. The committee of the whole gave staff direction to go ahead and start putting the particulars together, which include the application itself, some kind of a description of the purpose of the program, and guidelines for the application to assist applicants in completing the packet. The purpose is what you saw last time. Basically, it's for commercial properties, some light industrial properties, to make property owners make improvements, generally to enhance the overall economic vitality and character of the city, to protect the general welfare of the city and to increase market values of private real estate, particularly looking at properties that may be undervalued or depreciating. Similar to the TIF grants we've done, however, this program will be for properties lying outside of the city's TIF districts. Specifically, where these properties are located that will be eligible for grants, provided they are commercial or light industrial zoned, and that the properties are not within a TIF district. So where they are eligible is in this 500-foot radius buffer, if you will, around the aggregated TIF 1, 3, and 5. That color is yellow. TIF 4 is yellow also. So if a property is located within the buffer area or within a corridor, there are four corridors or gateways, it is not eligible for a proposed gateway improvement grant if it is also within a TIF district. Also, properties, although perhaps zoned, commercial or light industrial, are not eligible if they are tax-exempt properties and, what was the other restriction? I'll think of it, I'm sure. Just give me a moment. With the residential properties as well. So if they're exclusively residential or zone residential, then, and if they're in the TIF district, ATIF district, or if they're tax-exempt properties, they're not eligible for grant. So the considerations, again, the geography is within that 500-foot radius, or along or within the commercial corridor slash gateways into the downtown. Activities that are eligible for grant funding include exterior building facades. These would be the facades that face a street, a public street, front yard slash street yard. So within those yards between the building and the public right-of-way, landscaping improvements are permitted for grant as our hardscape improvements. So interior walkways, for instance, retaining walls, driveways, even if someone were to propose art, we could consider that as a hardscape improvement. And finally, commercial signs are eligible for grant funding. And those signs can either be mounted on the building itself or as a freestanding monument sign. In terms of specifics, it's a 50/50 minimum matching grant. The grant amount maximums are as follows. If it's a landscaping/hardscape or hardscape project, the lesser of 10,000 or 50% of the project cost is the maximum grant. If it's a building or a combination building and landscaping/hardscape project, the lesser of $20,000 or 50% of total cost is the matching, is the grant maximum. If it's just landscaping/hardscape alone, that's a $10,000 maximum or 50%, whichever is lesser. And if it's a signage grant, the $1,000 is the maximum grant or 50% of the total cost, whichever is less. When we spoke in March, we were talking about, instead of an ongoing grant application process where anytime given the year, an applicant can come in and submit an application for a grant, and it's kind of, we just keep taking them until time runs out, or I should say, or until the budget runs out. In this case, on an annual basis, we'll set an application due date, so grant applications must begin by June 1st. And one of the reasons we're suggesting that is it's cleaner and also because we want it to be a competitive grant program, so that we get them all in at once, so we can review the grants and prioritize, or at least rank them as to who we think we want to recommend, or perhaps reduce the grant request to certain amounts, so that we can spread the money a little further and see if the projects can still be done. So in terms of metrics when ranking these grants requests, the impact on the property and also on the neighborhood of the gateway area. We thought this could be particularly the case when you've got a corner lot where it fronts two different streets, within those corridor or in the buffer area. The overall value of the project, so a larger project, particularly if the leverage is greater than 50/50, would be considered of perhaps greater importance and prioritized. And again, with the, in terms of leverage, the higher the match of private funds, so that if the city can stimulate, say, $2 for every $1 of grant money, or $3 for every $1, that would be considered a greater, a better application, or a more competitive one than a strict 50/50 grant. And also, we wanted to talk about trying to earmark money where possible for retail uses, retailers or restaurants, because they generate, obviously, sales tax for the city. And finally, there are properties that are legal, although non-conforming, with respect to the building, or setback, or landscaping. So that many of the properties, particularly out in the corridors, were developed when the regulations were perhaps not as site-specific, and I wouldn't call it onerous, but more demanding in terms of the aesthetics of the site. So if you've got a property that should have been landscaped in the perimeter but wasn't because it's permitted when it was built, and now it's grandfathered as legal though non-conforming, if someone were to address a legal non-conforming issue and bring it into conformity, that would make the project more competitive in a ranking system. The funding source, this is interesting. Back, I believe it was in 1992, when DCO was DECA, there was federal monies through the HUD/CDAT program that was allocated out to the communities, and the City of Batavia were given some funding levels. Originally, it was used for a microloan program, but that's kind of laid fallow for a long time. So in 2016, just a couple, three years ago, the state sent us a letter from the, from DCO, which is a successor to DECA, that those funds are no longer obligated for anything in specific. The city can use them as they wish. But our thinking all along is that the original intent was for community development, economic development, so let's try to utilize them. And they haven't been used to date. So you've got all $296,000 in there. Again, that's a full release. When we met on March 12th, we suggested, say, a five-year program, maybe at $30,000 a year. Therefore, allocate perhaps half of that $296,000, and the other half could be found for uses elsewhere. At this point, I'd like to get some direction for this, at least this first year, as to how much you want a budget of that $296,000. Whether you want to go with that $30,000, whether you want to go perhaps more than $30,000 for this first year, in case we get several grants that exceed the $30,000, or if you want to shorten the pilot period, so that it's only a three-year period, and it's 50 a year, or, you know, four-year period at nearly 40 years. I just would like to get that direction for you, because we can establish that at this time. It would be helpful. And finally, glad I was able to go through that pretty quickly.
Thanks, Chris.
Yes.
Okay, so my first comment is in the application, the instructions and forms for grants, there's a typo in line one. There's a...
At least I waited well into the document.
Yes, there's a C missing in the word "application."
What is there?
A C missing in the word "exhibit A of grant application." It's missing the C.
Is that a silence? No, that must be, that's a hard C, right?
A hard C, yeah.
Like a facade?
Yeah, it's not like a facade. And the second comment I had is I am a little disappointed that this doesn't, the gateway was chosen to go down Route 31 Batavia Avenue to the south, instead of doing anything in, on Route 25, in all those areas. Because when you were talking about things like non-conforming landscaping, things like that, there are so many buildings there that could look just so much better if they had landscaping in front of them. And by not including them in this, it's kind of, you know, is it because of money? Is it because we had to come up with finite boundaries?
No, no, no. Well, we needed to come up with boundaries, and we did consider and discuss at length, including Route 25, South River Street, because, as you said, that is a problem, aesthetically speaking. Years ago, in fact, when I first got here, I guess, 2013, I think you and, Scott and I talked about, how do we address that, short of creating another TIF district? And there is something in the statute called a business improvement bid district, a business development district, that allows you to generate money. You have to do a eligibility study, but it's not as comprehensive and as onerous as doing one for TIF. But you prove it's eligible under state law, you create this business district, and what funds that is not property tax, but sales tax. Or you can actually include occupant service tax. So I think we might have mentioned this, if you go to get your car fixed, you generate sales tax from the parts, but you can also, if the city wanted to enact the tax on service, so that the labor cost would also be taxed. That's a political question, definitely a policy question. Also, the tax has to be the new tax. So it's not our existing home rule or municipal tax. It's a brand-new business district tax, which can be implemented up to a full penny, but at 25 cent, 25, 0.25 cent values. So say you go with a half a cent tax, right, and on the retail, that, you have to use that money for projects that are solely limited within that district. That's how we thought we'd address South River Street, because it is such a grand location, and we, I believe, you have enough properties where there's a preponderance of either nonconformities or, you know, areas where traffic is a problem, and traffic's one of the key elements in determining a business district, that I think would be eligible to create a business district. And so I thought we should look at, take advantage of that statutory authority and create the district. But again, the district means nothing if the policymakers aren't willing to enact the tax. In my experience, that you may get pushback from certain retailers, because why, they would think, you know, why would I want to tax something that my competitors outside the district don't tax? But the rationale is, well, because that money has to go back into the area to include your property for improvements to private property. Also, for what it's worth, the taxes are restricted. Certain uses can't, like title, if you have cars or boats or anything that there's a title to, you can't enact a business tax on that. But for an appliance, for instance, say you buy a $400 washing machine, and you've got a one-cent tax on that, that's $4, right? That would be, you know, is that, is someone going to drive to St. Charles? Not that there's an appliance company, a salesperson down on South River, but as an example, is someone going to drive 15 or 20 minutes to a competitor to save $4 on a washing machine? You know, I don't think that's the case. So when we talked about South River, we thought of that as a separate problem to be addressed. And, you know, again, I could put together the rationale, Scott and I could work together on that, and that could be a good way to address it. We're spinning our wheels if the city doesn't want to enact that business tax, because there's no other way to generate funds for those improvements except through that statutory tax.
So you're saying you can create a district, and only in that, the boundaries of that district, would there be a use tax, a service tax?
Yeah. Well, you could do the service tax. Right now, there's no service tax anywhere in the city.
Right, exactly.
But there is a sales tax.
Right.
But under this business district, you could create both.
Stuff for labor, things like that.
Right, right.
A service tax.
A service. So, you know, you could do that both for the sales tax, the actual material that you're buying. You know, you, there's a guy that, for instance, sharpened saws, chainsaws, because I've used them, right? And I had to buy a new chain and some other stuff. So I paid sales tax on that. But the bulk of that bill, actually, was him fixing my saw, you know? So if you were to apply a tax on both of those things, you could generate income. But you, you know, you got to sell it, because, you know, nobody, because who pays that tax? It's going to be their customers.
Right, right. I can understand that. Laura?
Can we look back at the map for the eligible areas? Because part of South River Street is included, because both properties within the blue area on the map and the red area on the map are eligible.
It just doesn't go very far.
It doesn't. It goes to about where the quarry is, actually, the concrete quarry. So, you know, admittedly, the bulk of these properties are on the street. Lost you this one. They're not, not within that. Now, there's nothing that can, that would stop me from simply mending that path. We could create the fifth quarter, and I think there'd be a pretty good market of potential applicants, but it may eat up other monies.
It's just ugly. That's just, you know, it's a gateway to the city, and we're putting up a monument sign, and it's, that'll be nice, but, you know, it could use some landscaping. It's, it's not an attractive corridor entrance to the city.
Well, there would take nothing more than to amend the map that's presented there and include a South River Street corridor. But, you know, we could probably go through $150,000 in private property improvements, and assuming there's applications, in fairly quick order. Now, that means we'd also be stimulating $150,000 in private investment, too. So that's a good thing.
That's exactly, because you have to get people to want to pay the match.
Yes.
So, and that's the other part. Lucy?
Would that be enough to make an impact on that street, though?
I don't know. Just some landscaping would be...
$300,000, I don't know if that would make a big difference along there. It's a big project.
You know, it's funny, you go by Eagle Concrete where the headquarters office is, and also Funway, for instance.
Right, very nice.
Those buildings just jump out at you, it's like, jeez, could we get more people to do some things?
And the skate park and all that stuff on the west side looks very nice. And then the east side does not look so good. So if there was a way to make that all look a little better, it'd be great, but... So, questions? And we have to help Chris set those yearly limits. Dave?
Chris, since you started the conversation on this, has there been any interest by any property owner?
I've had three property owners talk to me about it.
Serious?
Yes.
Okay.
Two are ready to fill an application. The third, it's a tenant, and they want to talk to their property owner, and I don't know that that's happened yet, because I've been kind of saying it's a "what if" for now.
I don't have an issue with this. I think it's a good idea. I mean, obviously, the funds are there for this reason. I would kind of want to bring to everybody's attention, at least for your thought anyway, the use of the money for signage, because I think what we're talking about here, everything except the signage is going to be a permanent improvement to the property. Where signage, if you allow that, I know we've had this conversation...
Many times.
...on town grants and all this kind of stuff. Signage is, you know, you could spend $1,000 on a sign, and that company or that business is gone in six months. So I don't really favor the signage idea whatsoever. Everything else, I think it's a great idea, and you should try it, and...
You know, in the application, let me interrupt first. In the application, we do allow for a clawback, that in three years of, and I realize, if the guy goes out of business, the last thing he's going to do is pay you back on a sign. But I do believe a monument sign, on the other hand, particularly on the corridors, those are less likely to be moved, you know?
Right.
And so maybe we should earmark monument signs, because those could make a big difference.
Right. And I thought about that, too, Chris, and I, you know, again, you know, if you did something like that, instead of just a sign that gets hung on the front of the building, that could come and go. But a monument sign is something that's going to be there, and the next person in could utilize that monument on the sign.
Anyone else? Mark?
In the map, and I don't know if it's intentional or just hard to do, the library wouldn't be included in this, would it, as a non...
The library is not, it's no longer on a TIF. It was TIF 2 that expired, but also, it is a tax-exempt property.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that...
Right.
I know it would be hard to draw, because it would be still surrounded in blue. I agree with Susan on the, on South River. I'm not ready to increase the tax on anybody to say, here's how we're going to improve your, your area and force it. I'd rather either a TIF or, or do this. But I was also wondering about using some of this money for our own monument signs.
That's what I was thinking, too.
I mean, it's, that's still, in my opinion, falls into the intended purpose, that it's trying to take care of our ingress to our city, so...
So is this sustainable? I mean, when the funds run out?
That's it.
That's it.
It's kind, but it's a one-off. It's not for operating costs, you know, it's capital improvements. And ideally, to not just improve the aesthetics, but also the value of the properties, and then the, you know, rising tide, and so maybe other people want to make their property more attractive. But to answer your question, that's it. It's not, we didn't, we thought about proposing a revolving loan fund, but it's just, you're never going to generate to bring it back if you want to make an impact early on.
Nick, you had your hand up, right?
Yeah, when we first talked about this, there was a qualifier of economic need that seems to be eliminated, which I'm happy. Is that correct?
Well, let's put it this way. The, in the application guidelines, it does say that the city may require financial information from the applicant. So in the event that we feel they need to prove financial need, in other words, you know, someone could argue, here's someone that has a project that's $20,000, and they've got $10,000, and that's all they got, and they got no more. And they really, if they don't get anything from the city, they're not doing the project. Whereas if somebody comes in, and he's got a $250,000 project, and he wants 20 large, you know, the percentage is, yeah, he's going to put a lot more money, but does he really need that money?
Right.
Also, conversely, someone may say, I want $20,000, $20,000, and I've only got 20, but that literally is all he's got. And he's starting a brand-new business. You wonder if you want to be supportive of something that is undercapitalized, you better double-check, because even though your 20 matches his 20, and that's 40, making a big improvement, if they don't have the wherewithal or the creditworthiness, they may go out of business, and that's $20,000 you probably didn't need to, didn't need to spend. So there is language in the guidelines that authorize the city and that we can require the applicant to provide everything from bank statements to, you know, to P and L statements, to business plan, check his credit, all the way to doing a full pro forma analysis and do a gap analysis of why he absolutely needs the money to sustain a viable and financially feasible project. So to answer your question, it's not in this, but it's in the application, but it's not required on every project that's at the city's discretion.
And then, as far as, what's your opinion as far as budgetary stakes? I mean, we spend it, and it's gone. Do we spread it out? What's, what do you...
Well, I think the first year, I mean, I play, if the city goes ahead with this, and I hope you do, I plan on actually visiting properties in the corridor especially. A couple key locations that I presented last week, stood on West Wilson, you'd vent Norwick, or near, at First Street, you know, and further west. And then there was also the, you'll recall the site at Prairie and East Wilson, where, you know, you got dazzos and a couple other uses that, you know, I'd like to approach him and say, hey, here's some free money. If you're willing to at least match it, maybe this, you can do this, and you can do that. So there's some targets that I want to address. Also, near the downtown, not in a corridor, but say, for instance, well, let's use one other corridor example, and this may actually prompt him to annex to the city, and that's the car dealership up on North Washington. That is actually in this corridor, but it's not in the city. You know, I think some perimeter landscaping would improve that site. And then there's a couple buildings that I've talked to the applicants, or potential applicants, that are very near the TIF district, but just outside of it, that specifically want to do a project, and they need, I mean, it's one of these situations where they absolutely have a potential, in one case, tenant, and the other is, they've got a situation where this historically significant building is deteriorating. They both have told me they want to do a grant, and those would probably both be about the maximum level. So we can go through the, say we did $30,000. That could happen in three or four projects, and then we'd be out of money this year. So that's why I left it open. But it's not as well-known, obviously, as our TIF grants. And the last thing I'll say on that is that some of our TIF grants, God love them, they're from, they're from Main Street. The people come to Main Street, and they say, you know, I really need some help, and they direct them, and they call me. So you're not going to have that necessarily, because properties that are subject to this grant, in most cases, are not in the downtown and won't approach Main Street for that advice. So we have to sell it to get the word out, otherwise the word won't be gotten out, and you may not get more than those three or four applications I mentioned.
Do you feel us determining a budget is necessary? Can we keep it somewhat open-ended?
Well, I will say, while Laura's sitting there, and she's been in Springfield, so I didn't get a chance to talk to her, so here comes, here's the wind-up. We could leave it open-ended. I definitely don't want, you're never going to get $150,000 worth of grant requests, you know, not this first year, and probably not even in two or three years. But, but the conversations we've had to date have been, look, this $296, this is money the city can use in a lot of different ways, you know? And let's not drain it all on this program. This is just a new pilot program, let's try it out. So, you know, in my opinion, we shouldn't look at whether it's over three years or five years, whatever, anything more than half of it. That's my opinion, again, Laura and I, we talked about that, 150 being the max. If you want to make that available, however many years it takes, that's cool, too. You don't have to, the only difference is that by putting a ceiling on it, that makes it all the more competitive. And we want to make sure we get good grant requests. They're not an unlimited number.
Scott?
Well, five years is a bit far, and I like the idea of keeping, keeping things, not use, maybe using half of that as far as earmark for this. And I would propose, maybe, if it's, if you do a three-year pilot program at 50 a year capped, you know, I mean, maximum, maybe you don't use it all in one year, maybe you do.
And roll it over?
And roll, yeah.
Is that good for everyone?
Not to, I mean, I don't think 50 is enough, to tell you the truth.
No, it's probably not.
It's, it's not a lot of money.
Well, let's, before you go on, does the council agree that I should, we should create this other corridor down South River?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, I guess, can say 100 for three years, 100,000.
so I didn't get a chance to talk to her, so here comes, here's the wind-up. We could leave it open-ended. I definitely don't want, you're never going to get $150,000 worth of grant requests, you know, not this first year and probably not even in two or three years. But, but the conversations we've had to date have been, look, this 296, this is money the city can use in a lot of different ways, you know? And let's not drain it all on this program. This is just a new pilot program, let's try it out. So, you know, in my opinion, we shouldn't look at whether it's over three years or five years or whatever, anything more than half of it. That's my opinion, again, Lauren, I, we talked about that, 150 being the max. If you want to make that available, however many years it takes, that's cool, too. You don't have to, the only difference is that by putting a ceiling on it, that makes it all the more competitive. And we want to make sure we get good grant requests. They're not an unlimited number.
Scott?
Well, five years is a bit far. And I like the idea of keeping, keeping things, not use, maybe using half of that as far as earmark for this. And I would propose maybe if it's, if you do a three-year pilot program at 50 a year capped, you know, I mean, maximum, maybe you don't use it all in one year. Maybe you do.
And roll it over?
And roll, yeah.
Is that good for everyone?
Not to, I mean, I don't think 50 is enough, to tell you the truth.
No, it's probably not.
It's not a lot of money.
Well, let's, before you go on, does the council agree that I should, we should create this other corridor down South River?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, I guess, can say 100 for three years, 100,000. We've got $300,000, 100,000 a year. If we don't use it, we roll it over and see how it goes. If we want it to be successful, I think people are going to use it and $50,000 is two or three projects and done. So, what if we have four or five projects that are legitimate projects? I guess it's conditional, then we can look at it again, but-
What if we didn't put a time limit on it? What if we set $150,000 and as it gets spent, it gets spent? And it could be two years, it could be six years. It just would depend on when people came for grant applications and, you know, you know, we're looking at that priority list and saying, it has to meet these criterias. This is how we're going to, you know, if 10 come in at once, this is how we're going to prioritize them. But what if one comes in, you know, since it's June 1st? So, people have to gear up, think about this, get it in. And so, zero come in, and then the next year, two-
No, if there's not going to be a limit, whether it's 30 or 50 or 40 or 25, then I agree, there's really no need to, especially if you want to roll money over, there's no need to set a drop dead date for applications. We can just do it on the same principle used at TIF grant. You know, we award grants all throughout the fiscal year until we run out of money. And I think the TIF grant budgets are 100,000 unless it's a special RDA. You know, like we saw with One Washington and perhaps what we might see soon on the 206, East Wilson. So, but generally, the TIF Downtown Improvement Grants and the TIF Facade Grants and the TIF Sign Grants, those have limits. And those are all within this $100,000 fiscal year budget. And when that money runs out, it runs out. And that's happened before since I've been here. But we've also not spent it all since I've been here. So, if I'm hearing you say, let's put a, you know, buck 50 out there and we'll just run it till we run out, that we can do.
I'd like, oh, sorry.
That's all right. I just wanted to mention that we may want to think about reserving some of the funds. We've been talking about the Pop-Up Shelly project. And if we wanted, those are going to cost, and, you know, I don't know at this point, $5,000 to $7,000 per. And maybe we'll start with a half a dozen of those. So, if we, you know, just keeping that in mind, that this fund would be a good one to use for that purpose as well. Tony?
Yeah, I like the idea of not putting the time, well, I think if we don't have a time limit and just let it go and, you know, until the money's spent, it can drag on too long and you lose that, that-
Impact.
That impact. What about if it's 100 or 150 in two years? And it can be spent, if it all gets spent in the first year, great, we'll probably have better impact. If it doesn't, we can always revisit it at that time. But making it available, if it is, you know, if we are successful with it, let's not put a cap on it. Let it go, and I don't know if that number's, you know, if we were, if we're talking half, maybe 150 and it's a two-year program. If we see at the end of two years, hey, we only, we spent about half that and there was some impact, let's extend it a year at that time.
I think that's a pretty good idea.
Other people have comments?
In HPC, we had money that I don't know where, Jeff might know, remember where this money came from. And we did a very similar thing where people applied for grants all at once and then we allocated money and we determined based on a lot of different criteria. Do you remember that, how that process went? It was an application date, everybody had to have it in by?
Yeah, that was... It was the, it was a early version of the facade and downtown improvement grant. That was part of, I think some of the granters have changed on that grant now, but that was the early versions of the facade and downtown improvement.
And all of those, if I remember right, had to be, like, they were all considered at one time. So, like, if this is the date, they all came in and that's why you had the different grants to prioritize, rather than, you know, somebody applies in April. Okay, we're giving you money now. Somebody applies in June, we're giving you money now. And so, I don't know if that's a better way to do it because then you do have that, like, rush to money. You have people competing for the money all at once. So, I don't know what's a better way to do it.
Well, I think in this case, because the word's not out, I think a lot of people won't know by the cutoff date if it's one June. Or at least they won't have their act together to get all the plans and whatnot. I can tell you that those grant programs early on are often competitive and time-sensitive because there's so many people in the pool that want the money. What you found in the downtown is we are getting fewer facade grant requests, for instance, because we're running out, we're not running out of buildings, but a lot of the buildings we've already addressed. And that's also true with the interior improvement grants, you know, for handicap accessibility and fire prevention. Those projects have come, and in many cases, they've happened and you won't see them again for a while. I can tell you elsewhere where I ran a grant program similar to this, it was, the downtown was, there was more mass of buildings and there was maybe, I want to say 50, maybe, or, yeah, about 50,000 in it on an annual basis. And you'd get, you know, 15 different applications, mostly for signs and for simple facade improvements. And even though we ranked them, what we ended up invariably doing was we cut everyone's grant request a little bit so we could spread it out as much as possible because it was-
That's what we did in HPC, too.
It was the politically right thing to do, and I think it was, everyone was happy with it, you know? So, the competitive nature of the grant program, it starts to be depreciated because you're just doling it out.
But it went further. I think, I think that that's what we found in HPC, is we had this-
More people were happy.
Pocket of money, and more people were happy. So, if someone applied for 10 and only got eight, they were still $8,000 ahead of what they were before. And so, it was, the first guy couldn't come in and say, I want 50 or 30 or whatever. And then all these other people had smaller ones and it, you know, he got all 30 and other people didn't get anything. So, I don't know if there's a more equitable way, if that's a better way to do it than just like-
Well, I'll toss one more political consideration at it. When you do it all at once and they're all do it once, you typically award them all at once. And so, you lose some of the identity that, the one thing about the programs that are here, I think it's great because you got, on a case-by-case basis, it comes up every maybe three or four weeks or maybe two months. And then you got the individual property owner that can talk about their project. And that's good PR, I think, for the company, as opposed to a resolution where I've done it in the past where you literally, in one resolution, you approve eight or 10 grants.
Okay.
And so, I see it on both sides.
Other questions?
Does anybody from the public have anything they'd like to say on this subject?
So, did you get direction from us how to fill the blank?
My direction I got was, we cap it at one, well, unless we want to call a vote, but I thought I heard, cap it at 150, let's try it for two years.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, so-
And include South River Street.
Or South River, yeah.
Yeah.
So, then I would recommend a City Council Resolution 19049R, a resolution authorizing the creation of the City of Batavia Gateway Improvement Program, GIP, for a term of two years with $150,000 budget.
Second.
Motion by Stark and second by Malay, was it? Oh, sorry. Callahan? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Okay, so we're obviously going to talk about that.
Oh, for sure. A lot of talking about it, yeah.
And I'm going to revise.
Hey, come on.
I got to revise the resolution exhibit because I have to change the corridor. And I'll set the budget in the document, so.
And add that C in application.
I'll look for all typos.
Will you have that ready for-
I will.
Next Monday's meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Susan, the next item is yours also, and that is the discussion on renewing the amount, renewing and amending the boundary agreement between the City of Batavia and the Village of North Aurora.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, Scott Buning, we'll talk about this one. This is a boundary agreement that we have with the Village of North Aurora. This is primarily that we're annexing the whole town, right? Isn't that how?
Pretty much, yeah.
He's now known as-
As well as North Aurora itself.
Okay. Scott, if you'd like to explain this, that would be great.
Yeah, we have a boundary agreement with the Village of North Aurora. And the line is kind of shown in red to an extent, and then it follows the line in blue here. And essentially, the, it's a, it's a 20-year agreement that is allowed under statute. And we were approached by North Aurora because the time for that agreement is getting near its end. And so, they wanted to talk about renewing and extending the agreement. As we'll have in a later item, we also then got into discussions with Sugar Grove because our agreement is, you know, in a similar timeframe as that. So, we wanted to talk about that one as well. So, essentially, right now, the boundary extends from, the current agreement technically extends from Randall Road West only. So, the areas to the east here were kind of the original agreement, but some of that lapsed with some subsequent amendments. So, the line in red is what is shown as the preferred or what the, I guess we'll call it, agreed-to line between the staffs between North Aurora and Batavia. Starting on the east end, if you'll notice, the blue dash line, that's kind of the existing line. So, most of this area would not change. The one thing that would change is that Lipold Park, which is in the Fox Valley Park District and owned by the Fox Valley Park District, they wanted that to be on their side of the line. And actually, because the boundary agreement doesn't apply in this part, they've actually already annexed this. So, it's kind of a moot point, anyway. But that happened in the last couple of weeks or so that they've actually annexed this. They had a liquor license extension that they wanted to add over that. But North Aurora is primarily in the Fox Valley Park District, as it is anyway. So, it's something that was, you know, being talked about during my tenure there, actually. So, they went ahead and annexed this, anyway. So, the line would then follow the current line, which includes letting us annex everything in Mooseheart. And then, on the continuing west, all the Mooseheart properties would be on our side of the line. It would follow the existing subdivisions in North Aurora, as well as the existing line for areas that are south of Seavie and west of Deer Path Road. This area here is already on North Aurora's side of the line so they could, you know, continue to annex that with that. From this point is where the line deviates relatively substantially. And the thought process on this is that North Aurora has, already has utilities in that area and has the ability to annex it and service it. You know, we are not contiguous to the Forest Preserve. We could jump through the Forest Preserve to annex any of these areas. And we also don't have any utilities in that area right now. So, the thought process on that was, it would make more sense because of the immediacy of the boundaries of North Aurora to let them have some of this additional area. The areas in green you can see are areas that are owned by the Kane County Forest Preserve. Since our original agreement, this parcel here on the south side of Seavie, some of the areas around Long Run Creek, or Lake Run Creek, were annexed or were bought by the Forest Preserve, as well as some additional areas that added to the Nelson Lake Forest Preserve, so, or Dick Young Forest Preserve. So, so some of those things have, you know, changed some of the configuration of things significantly. So, the line we've proposed is generally following Seavie. Then it would go south on Bliss Road, east then on Norris Road, and then east along the section line, the half-section line to the existing boundary line. So, that would give North Aurora additional territory south of Seavie Road. The area that's concross Hatch essentially is kind of a first option area. We had had a lot of discussion back and forth about this, whether we should have this or whether they should have it. What we've come up with is an area that whoever gets here first would get it, essentially, and this would be it. The exception would be is if it becomes Forest Preserve, then nobody would get it because it would just be Forest Preserve lands and there really would be no purpose in annexing the land. So, so we've kind of let this be a first, first community option. Again, North Aurora's argument is that, you know, they could pretty easily get up to this area here. They probably would have the ability to service it with utilities. And it, and it seems to be kind of a natural extension of, you know, where their property, you know, territory could go. So, so that, so that was the line that we had talked about with them. So, this is the negotiated line that we had. We wanted to present this. This is not a formal approval, whereas a whole process we have to go through is part of that, which includes a public hearing. We have to publish a notice for it. Public can come and attend and state their opinions on it and what have you. Both communities have to do this public hearing. They've changed the statute since we've originally done this agreement. That's just to provide more public input on that. So, if you're in agreement with this, we would then proceed to have a date set and a public notice done and a public hearing on amending the boundary line agreement. If we don't do it, the option is that the agreement, you know, could, can run for a few more years with our current line, but then it would expire. And then, if we don't negotiate a line by then, then, you know, it's all bets off and anybody can annex any territory without any restrictions.
Scott, can we trade them anything?
Can we trade them anything?
And I only ask that because, you know, we're giving up quite a bit of Batavia. And I wondered if, you know, there's like areas on the, on the east side of the river where it's Batavia School District and it's North Aurora, if, you know, things could change there.
Yeah, the lines follow, for the most part, the school districts already. You know, Mooseheart is in both West Aurora and Batavia School District. So, you know, the line kind of crosses through their property. In fact, most of the stuff that's along Orchard and Randall is West Aurora School District. So, you know, they are basically saying we would still have the ability to annex the rest of the Mooseheart property, that we would have, you can't really see it, it's a little bit off the side of the map here, but there's a couple of properties that are on the east side of Hart Road that would still be on our side of the line. So, you know, it is, it is, appears to be a little bit one-sided. But again, you know, the fact of the matter is that we don't have a boundary agreement really east of Randall Road, effectively, that they could annex any territories that are over there. And then, west of it, you know, they could let the agreement expire and then they could annex anything they want. This also does another thing, and you'll see it when we talk about the Sugar Grove agreement, it does completely bound North Aurora. So, it doesn't allow them to annex west of Bliss Road. So, that would completely, you know, constrain them from going further.
That was my, my question was, is why is the line that has anything to do with us coming back south to stop them?
No, and I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and show you briefly, since we're talking about it. But let me show you the Sugar Grove line, because there's a relationship between them. So, so the red line, red line here is the current line between us and Sugar Grove. So, the bottom, you know, this, this here is Norris Road, Bliss Road is here, and this, the Lake Run Creek is here. So, you can see kind of where it runs through the Forest Preserve area now and goes up to Main Street and Bliss Road in this area. So, the new line that's being proposed would follow this blue dash line, which would then, you know, give us some additional territory. You know, Sugar Grove is essentially relinquishing some territory to us, particularly around the area of Fabian and Maine in this area here. So, we would have some ability to annex some additional territory up in that area if that doesn't get purchased by the Forest Preserve. So, you know, we are getting a little bit when you put the two agreements together. We're not getting a lot, but we are also preserving our boundaries.
Any, anyone have questions?
Yeah, we poised in, with North Aurora, we're not poised to develop that, anyway, correct?
Correct, yeah. We don't have any utilities there. We don't have anybody approaching us about, you know, developing any of that. That's right.
And so, and with, say, wastewater treatment facility, that then takes a little pressure off on future development.
Right, and some of these areas, remember that Fox Metro would service some of the southern area here. I mean, North Aurora is completely on Fox Metro's system. And so, you know, if we were going to somehow develop some of this area further west, we would have to somehow work out an agreement with Fox Metro to connect into that whole system and everything else.
I thought when we annexed all of the Mooseheart stuff, that everything south of the creek was going to go to Fox Metro?
Correct, that's right.
What my recollection of that was, that's where we thought that would go, just to keep from having to add more to our system.
Right, and Gary can chime in if he wants to. But essentially, we've established what we've called the red line for everything south of Coventry Hills and Tanglewood would essentially go to Fox Metro. There is an interceptor right at the gas pipeline in Orchard Road that would be extended and that, all that area would be serviced by that interceptor.
Nick?
I get the logic behind it. I'm struggling with just giving a plan. How did you come, I mean, how did you deal with that? And actually, on a personal front, is there any conflict? I mean, you, you started this project with North Aurora. Is there any conflict?
I'm not, I'm not some kind of a spy, no. No, I mean-
I've been watching the Hisp Channel.
No, I think, you know, Laura's in all these meetings as well, and she can, she can chime in as well. But, you know, I think when we started looking at it logically, what are the chances of us, gosh, it keeps jumping, the chances of us, gosh, it keeps jumping, what are the chances of us getting out into this area out west and providing utility service out there? It's relatively minimal. I mean, that we're going to be able to get out there. We have, you know, first of all, we'd have to either get properties that are contiguous. You can see all these properties are essentially already developed residential. Trying to get those properties to annex and then be able to jump through the Forest Preserve and then get agreements for utility extensions out there, it's going to be a tough road to go along to try and do that. So, you know, are we giving up some territory? Yeah, we are. But is it territory that we can logically service? I would say probably not.
And again, sorry. Gary?
And is it territory that we want to service? I mean, what's going to be out there? It's not going to be industrial. It's not going to be retail. Single-family homes are a money loser. So why, why would we extend millions of dollars' worth of infrastructure out there just to serve a single-family homes?
And I think it also preserves our school district with a little less, with a little less load on our school district if we don't have to worry about all those houses out there, or the possibility of all those houses out there.
Lucy?
Well, I was just going to say, though, I mean, where is the school district boundary? Because all the houses there are all in Batavia. They don't have to be serviced by city sewer and water. I mean, those are all township homes and...
Yeah, the school district boundaries are very odd here. So the line that's right about here is actually the Caneland School District line, which then comes through the Forest Preserve. So kind of west of the creek, more or less, is actually in the Caneland School District. And then, and then the West Aurora School District pretty much follows, it's kind of, it kind of jogs through here, but it's mostly North Aurora and areas south of Seavie are in the West Aurora School District. So Batavia School District doesn't really extend out here. It's more up further north and...
Well, that's Batavia where you have the cursor right now.
Batavia's in, our current boundaries are in blue, yeah.
For school district?
For the city limits. So I didn't, I don't have the school district superimposed on here. But these areas, the existing developed areas are primarily Batavia School District.
They are.
Yeah. But these areas out here are either West Aurora or Caneland.
And where the cursor is right now is West Aurora?
I believe that's West Aurora. So, yeah.
So we're not, you're not proposing giving land that's, changing, not giving land, changing the boundary. That would put land that's in Batavia Schools in another municipalities.
Correct. Right.
There's nothing currently developed that we would be giving up. There's no houses, anything. It's just land.
Well, I mean, there's some houses in here. I mean, there's farmhouses and whatnot.
Well, but not, not a subdivision, not...
Not, not true subdivisions or anything. No.
So the reason I ask that is, you know, I wouldn't want to give, you know, North Aurora land so they could go and develop it, and then that'd be a burden onto the schools.
Right.
But I don't think that's the case, because I think that's, that's Caneland and...
Caneland, West Aurora primarily. Right. Yeah. And like the Keim property here, this keeps the Keim property on our side. I think Keim is actually split between West Aurora and Batavia School District. So it's...
Right in the middle of that.
So that, that white area is, because you just said the blue is the city.
This is all unincorporated here.
Unincorporated?
Batavia Township in the school district, though. And Park District. I don't know, and Library.
Yeah, the, anything that's annexed into North Aurora goes into the Messenger Library, because they're actually considered a municipal library. So every time they annex property, if it's in Batavia Library District, it gets removed. So just like, kind of like our fire district, when we annex property, it's removed from the Batavia Fire District or North Aurora Fire District were the case. So that's, that's what happens with that. This is by law.
Other questions? You know, this is, I know that this is going to sound weird, but I almost hesitate to do this without talking to the mayor. And the only reason I say that is because he is such a, like, stickler on these boundaries, that when I look at this, I think, what would the mayor say?
He doesn't know this?
He should know this, yeah. I mean...
But he's not here. That's my point. Yeah, that's my point, is the mayor's not here.
Know about it.
No, exactly. And so I just wonder what would the mayor say about changing the boundary lines? And that's kind of...
He was also present for a couple of...
He was present at some of the meetings, and I don't think he had...
Susan, I talked to him today about a couple of other things, and I, he's out of town today. And I said, was there anything on the agenda that you have an issue with? And he said, no.
Okay. Just wondered. Okay. That's the only reason?
He popped his head in during some of our meetings. He saw what was going on.
Just asking. I mean, I remember through Mooseheart, he was a big boundary person. So, Alan?
And I look at the acquisition of the property that's in green there and how that has expanded over the time I've been on the council. I don't know that that's going to get developed.
Right.
I really feel like this, because there's a couple of big, single properties out there that I think the county has their eye on.
Right. Yeah, the county has, has had an objective of, you know, the mid-county trail and connect, and especially purchasing properties along the Lake Run Creek. So I would see them trying very hard to acquire parts of, if not all, these properties. I mean, this property here along Bliss Road, this 120-some acres, that was acquired within, you know, the last few years as well. So they're trying to expand the Forest Preserve in that area as well.
Anyone from the public? Nope. Okay.
Marty?
Yeah, and we're not approving anything for any of this. This is going to be a few months at least away.
Yeah, well, maybe a month and a half or so is kind of what the idea would be. Because both towns have to pass ordinances.
Right.
Okay. So, you know, we have some alternatives on this. We can direct staff to begin work on reestablishing the boundary agreement with North Aurora with the new line as proposed. We can direct staff to reestablish the boundary agreement with the current line. We can direct staff to create a different boundary line. We do not reestablish the boundary agreement, and the existing agreement will expire in 2023. And so, pros, reestablishing the boundary agreement line will allow for certainty in future property development. The line would inform property owners, developers, to which community the properties can be annexed into the future. In addition, allows each community to properly plan for infrastructure extensions and capacity improvements to accommodate future developments in the boundary area. Cons, the line as proposed would cause Batavia to shift some territory to North Aurora. However, it's unlikely we would service that area in the future. And if the boundary agreement expires, there would be no formal line established between the communities, which means that either community could annex areas without any restrictions. Budget impact is the cost of the city attorney. And public, notice a public meeting regarding the new agreement. There's been some staff time used for this. Staffing impact, as part of the negotiation, there's been staff time used. Timeline for action, it expires in 2023. And as Scott says, they, staff would like to define the line now for annexation and utility extension certainty. And so, staff recommends that we do proceed and reestablish the boundary agreement. So which way do we want to go on this? Alan?
One last thing, I think, before we decide on this section of it. I'd like to see the rest of it going out east.
Oh, the Sugar Grove?
To see what, no, back on the east side, back towards Kirk Road. To see, that's as far, that's as far as it goes. Then it becomes Aurora east of that?
Yes, because Aurora, you can't really see it very well, but at the southeast corner here, this is Aurora here. So it would define the line. We made sure, we wanted to make sure completely defined.
How far, how far it went east?
Right.
Yeah, that's why when you originally showed this, I asked if there's anything we could trade. Because, you know, areas like Hartfield and all of those, those are all Batavia School District, but they're in North Aurora. And so I wondered if we could get all those, all of that.
That northeast area is actually serviced by city sewers, so we could see if we could have them, you know, de-annex that and bring that into Batavia.
That's right. Okay. Direction to staff? Anyone have any further comments?
Move forward.
Okay. Move forward with it as laid out.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is the discussion about the Sugar Grove Boundary Agreement. Oleman Stark?
Well, if you'd like to go right ahead into that one, Scott.
Yeah, this is kind of the same thing, as we talked about this, this line purposely matches the North Aurora line we just talked about. This, the red line is the current line, and the proposed line is this blue line here. So it, you know, essentially gives us territory. Now, granted that, you know, a lot of that territory is going to North Aurora, but, you know, this area in here would be additional area that we could potentially annex, some of which, or a big chunk of which is Forest Preserve. But, you know, maybe we'll get out there, maybe we won't, depends on circumstances. But it does give us a little bit more territory. This line actually was the school district line, and that's part of the reason why they wanted to, we originally established that line there. So this, you know, gives us some territory that's going to end up being Caneland School District. So the line also is truncated at Main Street. Both communities felt that if either one of us should get past Main Street, you know, we'll deal with that at some point in the future. But we don't feel that we're, either community is going to get up into this area anytime soon. So if we do, you know, we've got a lot of other infrastructure things that we have to talk about.
Anyone have any questions about this one? Comments? Nick?
Just the thought process again. Now, we're getting something from Sugar Grove. What are they getting? Are they getting something from North Aurora and...
It's kind of the same thing. I mean, their boundary agreement's going to expire as well. And so, you know, it does guarantee which community gets to annex anything else. I mean, you know, negotiations were separate with North Aurora and Sugar Grove. And, you know, there was some back and forth about, you know, North Aurora wanting to go further west, and Sugar Grove said, well, we're not really willing to do that for the most part. But, you know, they were willing to give some of this area here, just because, you know, from a logical standpoint, it just made more sense for us to, you know, for them to let North Aurora take some of those additional territories. So I think all three communities talked about, you know, making sure all the lines matched. We want to make sure that there was no gaps. Those of you that, you know, the story of Joliet, Shorewood, and Plainfield, you know, Plainfield and Shorewood had a boundary agreement line that, you know, said, okay, this, you know, we'll go north, you won't go north of here, and we won't go south of here. And they forgot to add Joliet, and Joliet just kind of went right in between. So that's why they annexed all this stuff in Kendall County. So didn't think about that third neighbor. So...
Scott, so this land, as proposed with the boundary agreements, it's not annexed, right?
Correct.
So it's, is it a township? Is it...
Township.
Okay.
Unincorporated, you know, unincorporated Sugar Grove and Blackberry Township for the most part. Yep.
So it just sits that way until somebody decides to annex it?
Correct.
But, sorry, with the boundary agreement, you can't annex in someone else's boundary?
Territory. On the boundary line. That's what it does.
That's the reasoning, the rationale for behind what we're doing.
Like an armistice line. Right. Yeah.
Okay.
And I think something else that's important to bring up, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remember right, we may never see anything developed there that we would annex. But anything that is proposed to be done there, because it's within our boundary area, we would be notified by the county or the township, whichever entity it is, of what the proposal is, and we would have an opportunity to object.
Right. If it's within a mile and a half, they notify us. And typically, in these boundary agreements, you have it where if we're not within a mile and a half, but the other community is, they can object on our behalf for it if we don't want something happening there. So that's typically how these things are structured.
If they remember to tell us.
Well, they get notice from the county. And the agreement says that they're supposed to, you know, provide us notice on that, if they get notice of that. So they will object on our behalf.
Yeah, I think that's one of the most important things about having the boundary agreement is, is our notification that would come to us of what's going to happen out there.
Right.
Okay. So again, the pros and cons are very similar on this one. Timeline for actions, this, the current agreement expires in 2026. But in order to make all of this at one time, so all three towns are in agreement, we would propose to get it done now. And so, staff recommendations is that we proceed with the reestablishment and amendment of the boundary line agreement with Sugar Grove. And does anyone have anything further? Direction to staff is to keep moving on this?
Nope.
Okay. You have your direction. Thanks, Scott.
All right. Thanks, Oleman Stark. Next item is yours also, which is the discussion on the short-term rental enforcement status.
Okay. So back in August of last year, we had a discussion with Scott about regulating short-term rentals, Airbnb-type rental properties. And so, this is further discussion about this. And so, we had given staff direction to start enforcing the rental regulations in 2018. And staff researched and initially found eight rental properties, and a ninth was found. Letters were sent out to the property owners. There was a requested response date of March 11. And so, there's, there's a lot more to this. So Scott, if you want to really kind of dig into what they told you?
Yeah. So of the nine, three of the renters said that they would convert them to the 30-day minimum rentals, which is outside the bounds of our bed and breakfast licensing. So those are then considered just leases, you know, like, but, you know, maybe not a year lease, but, you know, we allow for anything over 30-day, 30 consecutive days is exempt from the ordinance. So that left the other six as to, you know, how we wanted to do things. So we received two applications for the conditional use. And again, to remind you, in order to operate a bed and breakfast, you need to get a conditional use first, and then you get a bed and breakfast license. And there's certain requirements that come with that as well. So as we started looking into this, and some of the property owners started contacting about, you know, what do they have to do in order to operate these, we realized that one of the things that seemed to be onerous or objectionable to some people was the fire, the fire and building code things in relation to fire protection. So essentially, in order to operate one of these, you would have to actually have the building sprinkled and have a monitored alarm system. And after discussion with the fire department, we felt that that was a bit excessive, that we didn't think that that was necessary because of these types of uses. And so, what we wanted to do is bring this to you first, before we, you know, sent some of these applicants forward to the conditional use process, and just to make sure that you were comfortable with changing that requirement to not require that. Because if, you know, if we are going to require that, that would probably make most of these either convert to 30-day rentals or just not operate altogether. So that's essentially the question that we've brought forward to you today, is, you know, whether or not you wish to make that change.
Okay. Questions? Lucy?
I think that having things like Airbnbs in the community is a positive thing. What are other, a couple of things. I have received comment that the conditional use permit is high from Airbnb operators. But what do other communities do in terms of sprinkling and fire monitoring?
Yeah, I think the, our statute mirrored the state, or our ordinance mirrored the state statute. But we did make it tougher, for whatever reason, when we drafted the bed and breakfast ordinance. I don't know the specifics of that, but, you know, we did make it tougher. So if we mirrored the state statute like other communities might, it does not require the sprinkling and monitoring requirements. So I didn't do any extensive research on other communities on what they do. But I know West Dundee has some pretty restrictive requirements, that they only allow bed and breakfast in their downtown area. And they require, I believe, a conditional use for that, too. So again, I haven't done exhaustive research, but, you know, each town does things a little bit differently.
Do most towns consider Airbnbs and VRBOs bed and breakfasts?
Most of them that I know of do. They consider kind of a bed and breakfast or a private inn or something to that effect.
I just wondered if there was a different category maybe developing, because they are kind of different than BnBs. But anyway. Scott, how much is a conditional use permit?
It's $500. And then the notice requirements, you know, the mail notice, the sign, and the public notice that goes in the newspaper, those are all part of it.
Questions?
And then we also don't, we do not have a license fee for the bed and breakfast. So once they get past the conditional use ordinance, that's essentially all they would have to pay for that. So...
And that's a one-time fee?
One-time fee.
One-time yearly or one-time period?
One-time period.
Okay.
What's a licensing fee generally cost?
There is no licensing fee.
What do they cost if they, in other towns?
It could vary from $25 to $100 per year, probably. It would be kind of like a rental licensing program, where they would have an annual fee of some sort, especially if we have to do inspections, you know, to offset our costs. You know, that would make sense, something like that.
Okay. So...
Then maybe people who want to speak to this.
Yeah, does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to address this time?
Okay, if you'd like to come up to the podium?
Yeah, give us your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Frankie, 701 Viking Drive, Batavia. Thank you for bringing this up for discussion. I appreciate it. I agree, bed and breakfast are a positive thing for the community. Right now, I've got a gentleman staying in our apartment that, well, let me back up a little bit. I emailed the city council my thoughts on this subject a couple of weeks ago, as well as the mayor. Right now, I've got a guy staying in the apartment from Germany here on business in Geneva. Last month, we had two guys, I'm sorry, the current renter is from France. Last month, we had two guys from Germany. Next month, we have two guys coming in from Geneva, Switzerland, staying at Fermilab for a conference in Fermilab. These are all people that are spending money in our town. They're not putting any burden on our society. We're not putting more children into the educational system without any increased tax revenues. If I rent my apartment out, which I live directly next to, there's a good chance there's going to be another child or two in the, in the educational system, which will end up costing the community more money without any additional tax revenues. I've been told the conditional use permit is, the $500 fee is besides the fact, but I've been told it's a three-to-four-month application process. And then I have to put a sign in the front yard and mail letters to all of my neighbors in a 500-foot radius. I think that's a little excessive. I understand permitting. I understand fees. I understand taxes. But this is a little, a little over the top, I think. The question was asked, what are other towns doing? I think what probably happened is our ordinance was copied from another town that was lobbied by the hotel motel industry, another big town. Batavia doesn't have any hotels or motels. We're not competing with anybody. We're not taking business away from anybody. The sprinkler regulations and the monitoring of the fire alarm systems, why would that apply to short-term rental, and it doesn't apply to a long-term rental? That doesn't make any sense, unless you want to force a business out. Then it makes all the sense in the world. Airbnb did $2.6 billion last year that Batavia could get a piece of. I would estimate my tax bill, my 3% tax bill to this city for 2023. my 3% tax bill to this city for 2019, somewhere around $750, it's not a ton of money, but it's not two kids going into the educational system that is costing the city $20,000, and that's what could happen if I have to take the path of least resistance and give up on There's other questions to be raised concerning the city ordinance, right now I understand it's a 3% tax on short-term rental, a lot of my rentals have been for more than 30 days, do I not pay my 3% tax then? I don't know, there's things that you guys need to discuss, but right now I believe it's written as a 3% tax on short-term, a lot of them have not been short-term, but I believe I would need the bed and breakfast license if I want to do anything, any combination. There's also ordinance, or there's also verbiage in the ordinance concerning insurance, I believe the city requires a million-dollar insurance policy and things like that, Airbnb, I can't speak for VRBO, but Airbnb does carry a million-dollar liability policy, does the city accept that? When I apply for my license, will the city accept that policy, or do I have to get an Do you guys have any questions for me?
Those are, those are very good comments, thank you so much for bringing them to our attention, and, you know, as the city council, when we have these discussions about things like this, it's a balancing act between people who bought a home in a residential neighborhood and don't expect to have, you know, a bed and breakfast next door to them because that's not what it was zoned for initially, so that's why we kind of have these discussions.
I understand that.
They go on.
My home is built with a two-bedroom apartment attached to it, none of my neighbors have lived there since the subdivision was built, everybody that purchased a house in that neighborhood, it's in Brenton Manor, all the corner lots were built as duplexes, there's people that are renting out on month-to-month leases that don't have to go through any of this.
That's a good answer.
I don't know how this ordinance protects any of the neighbors in relationship to a long-term lease.
I understand what you're saying, yeah, that's all great things for us to consider, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Thank you, if you'd like to come up to the podium, please.
I'm Nancy Holmeyer, I live at 415 Maple in Batavia, I have been doing differently than him, I have two bedrooms in my home, I never rent them out to anybody unless I'm there, so it's not like they have a private apartment, most of the people who are interested have family in the area or grew up in the area, sometimes, in fact, last week I had a man staying there when he was transitioning to a job and therefore was here while looking for an apartment, the average people on age that I get are in their 50s to 70s, the younger people, like the man last week was in his 30s, and these people come, I've had a few that have stayed a month or two months, but most of them are three to five days, and so it's a completely different thing, my driveway is big enough that nobody parks on the street, there's no noise, there's nothing that I can see would bother any of my neighbors, those who know about it want to know who's coming and are curious, and I've had people saying, oh, that's great, there's somebody here in town now if I have relatives coming and I don't have room, and it's been that sort of a thing, almost a friendship-type thing, again, if I have to do all the modifications, no, that doesn't make sense, I don't think I'm competing with anybody in the area, the people come, they look for places to eat, and they're here, they know the area very often, again, the insurance, I do have some insurance, but not to the extent that you seem to think I should have, I don't know what kind of questions you might have for me, because I don't think I have anything that makes noise in the neighborhood or would bother anybody.
Anyone have questions, Dave?
Yeah, I just have a question, where do you get these renters and how are they vetted?
They are through Airbnb, they are vetted through them, I sometimes vet further by questioning things, like I had some people who were interested in staying for a month, and she had mentioned having some health problems and with her feet or legs, and I was concerned, I have dogs, and I make it very obvious, but I don't want one of them running into somebody like that, so therefore I kind of, you know, so I do go a little further.
Thank you.
Anyone have?
I have a question, what is the general cut to an Airbnb, if a contract's through Airbnb, what percentage do they get?
I don't, they charge the renter, and I honestly don't know what it is, but I pay 3%, and they show that they collect it, and it's the tax that we're talking about, where they send it, I don't know, but they do collect that from me.
I think generally a million-dollar liability policy is pretty general for all rental-type of properties, I would think that if it's contracted through an Airbnb, I don't see why we wouldn't take their insurance.
Yeah, I do have a million-dollar coverage, you know, personal liability. Again, I do not want to do the bed and breakfast, because then I get into the health department requirements, and I feel kind of bad, but in turn, I'm not going to buy packaged food and bakery goods to offer to somebody, so therefore, it's not a B and B, it's strictly, I'll have coffee that they can make and tea, and that's about it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. This is obviously not a one-size-fits-all type thing, I mean, if you do research on this topic across the country, across the state, regulations vary greatly, so it's really kind of up to us what we want to see, how we want to regulate it in Batavia, and whether it's lowering the conditional use permit, or it's, I mean, I think it's great that we're tracking this, I think that we've seen in other neighborhoods, by not having any way for the city to have any backing on this, it's been detrimental to neighborhoods, so, Mark?
Go ahead and finish.
Oh, sorry, so I just, you know, I don't know if we need to kind of hone in on what we want our program to look like in Batavia, and it will require a little bit of tweaking, I can understand why it's onerous to talk about putting in sprinklers and emergency lighting, you know, I can understand why that's an expense that most people, I don't have to have it in my house, so why do I have to put it in a, you know, if I'm renting out two rooms in my house, I can understand that part, but there, I do think that it's important that we, and it's just my opinion, that people who want to participate in Airbnb do have to have some type of permit that we can regulate it, so, Mark?
I remember when we originally had this discussion, that it was, you know, a couple of bad apples that were out there, and I talked about, we saw that through regular ordinance, if there's a lot of noise, and they hit the time of day, that there's, they're violating a noise ordinance, then you go and address that, and if they weren't, if the homeowner isn't present, then they're still going to be liable for it because it's against their property, so, yeah, I think when we're starting to try and put all these restrictions in and charge a lot of money, and sprinklers, yeah, I mean, the sprinklers, all these other things that maybe we just weren't paying close enough attention to, we shouldn't be doing, I think if Airbnb is taxing, and I can't remember, what happens, we're not getting, I mean, that's all going to Aurora.
We're not getting anything right now, no, the taxes that they're collecting, Airbnb, they may be going to the state, but they're not going to the city, we're not getting one dime from any of these right now.
That's the only thing, I mean, I think we should be, we should be able to receive some tax for this, it's not significant, I don't think for any one person, I mean, we're not talking a ton of tax, what would that, what is the tax right now from the Aurora Convention Bureau?
The, yeah, so the tax that is required for rooms is 3%, and then 90% of that goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, so we get pennies, essentially, so we don't get a lot right now, so that our agreement with the Convention and Visitors, so if we raise it to 5%, they still get 90% of whatever that is, that's our agreement for the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Yeah, I mean, so, to sum it up, I'm in favor of dropping some of the requirements and maybe even the fee, but we have to do better than several months to turn around a conditional use permit.
Well, let me talk about that a little bit, because the conditional use permit covers not just this, it's condition use permit regulations, so we can't really compress the time appreciably, because, you know, it is what it is, we have to send out notices, there's a hearing process, it has to come to you twice, and it's just like any other conditional use, now whether you want to require a condition use, that's a different question, you know, we can do it differently, where we could maybe do an administrative use permit or something like that, we'd still have to do a text to the zoning code to do that if we want to, you know, lighten up, you know, what the regulatory parts of it are, so that would be a potential option also, but we would have to still go through a text to change that right now, because right now, our zoning code requires it as a conditional use.
Marty?
I think that's what I would prefer, just because I think these are types of options that we want to encourage, that for the sheer fact that we don't have a hotel here, that the more people that I think that we can have stay that are vetted, that we want to make sure that they're staying in the community, that they are here more, instead of having to go outside and spending their money elsewhere, or just not even spending their money, the time and travel that if they wanted to be here, let's let them use that, and just like Mark said, we've mentioned it time and time again, the, we have the rules and laws on the books that deal with the problem situations, and it would be no different than if somebody just wanted to have friends stay over all the time, and that they're coming and going at will, that's not regulated as far as who someone can have in their house, but we do have for loud parties, noise ordinances, littering, and if we just enforce those laws and encourage, what we really want is these type of businesses to kind of flourish and create more options in our community, then that's what I would prefer.
Helen?
Yeah, I'd like to see some type of like administrative thing, like talking about, if that means we have to change, you know, the zoning code or whatever we have to do, let's do that, maybe put a one-year moratorium on that, or revisit it in a year and see, does that work, has that encouraged the people to do what they want to do there, have we had problems with it, you know, and then find out the insurance question, because I think that's a big one, if, when they sign up to be with Airbnb or VRBO or whatever they use, if that covers it and that will work for it, then we don't have to ask the homeowner to add another policy.
Yeah, I believe right now the statute is the million dollars, again, we mirrored the state statute, so it's a million dollars per property, so it's not just a blanket with Airbnb, so.
And I think the sooner that we get moving on it with, now that they've broken ground over at Fermilab, that's, it's going to be a whole bunch of scenarios like that, and I would rather them come and stay here.
Yeah, and keep in mind, we're not shutting anybody down.
No.
No, we're letting people continue to operate right now, so.
Make it easier, make it more accessible.
And if somebody's doing it less than 10 days a year, or 30 days at a crack, they're not, this is not applicable.
Correct, yes.
Dave?
Scott, why does the city government care about their insurance policy?
It mirrors the state.
It mirrors the statute, that's what we've done.
Why does it matter to us?
Well, I guess they would have to somehow prove up that they have an insurance policy, there'd be some documentation.
Why do we care if they have insurance or not? If someone, if there's an incident on the property or something like that, it doesn't affect city government, what, are we trying to protect themselves from themselves?
I think there's probably some level of that, I mean, again, I'm not, I don't know who drafted the statute and why they did it that way, but that's, that's what we hear.
I would say that it's probably to protect the guests, that the state says that the state has an interest in protecting guests, a lot of the requirements that you see in the statute are meant for, so that they are protected, that they aren't damaged in a situation where there isn't sufficient coverage for whatever damages or injuries that they sustain.
Like clean linens and things like that that are in there too, it's similar language.
I think we're kind of speculating on why that requirement is there, I think we should look into that further, why are we requiring it if we don't know why we're requiring it? Alan, you seem to know.
Yeah, I have a real good theory on that, because I know somebody that had an issue with a house that got destroyed by somebody that had rented it, part of it is, it's that, and it's also the city that allows it, if we give somebody a license to have this, and something bad happens there and they want to sue for $5 million, they're coming after the city that wrote the license to them too, so I think that's one of the reasons the state has that in there, is they want a policy to back up.
We're not licensing anyone.
Right.
We haven't licensed anybody yet.
No, but we will, and that.
Not necessarily.
Well, it depends if we move forward with this or not.
Yeah, if we move forward with this and we have a license.
We don't need to beat this, but I think before we require something like a million-dollar policy or a $5 million policy, why, and why a million, why not $1,000, why any, I don't know.
I mean, if Airbnb has the policy and that's going to cover it, let's not be redundant, right?
I mean, it's up to you on what you want to do, because right now, the ordinance is what the ordinance is, and that's how it's written, if you're looking to change that, then obviously, you know, we would change that.
Susan, I do have one more follow-up.
Sure, go ahead.
And as somebody mentioned, you know, this whole discussion started because we had a couple of bad apples, or we have a couple of bad apples maybe, I'm going to ask, and I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but I guess I'll put Scott on the spot, the two people that are down here doing business tonight, have we had any complaints about their properties?
No.
So what's interesting is the people that are down here that are really supportive of this are good citizens that are operating a good business, that are bringing good things to town, the people that we've had a problem with, obviously they know that this conversation is happening, and they're not down here trying to defend themselves.
Right, which is how it normally works, so, just to clarify the policy, if you rent your, a room in your house or your house for less than 10 days a year, you don't have to do anything.
Correct.
If you rent for 30-day blocks or more, you don't have to do anything.
Correct.
So this is for the people who rent short-term rentals that go over 10 days a year.
Well, or, short-term rentals that are less than 30 days, but they rent that more than 10 days per year, yes.
Yes, okay, so then, I guess, to Dave's point, there will be people who do this and do it well, and there'll be no complaints, there's a part of me, and it doesn't apply to me because of where I live, but let's say you're in a residential subdivision, and that's what you expected to be like, of all of my neighbors, you know, your neighbors, whoever, we all bought houses, we all expect our neighbors to live in our houses, so now suddenly you've got it turned into more of a rental-type thing where it's short-term rentals, does that affect the property value, does it affect the neighbors, I mean, we're only hearing from people who want to rent out their house, but what about the people who surround those houses, those are the people that I wonder about in a situation like that, do they have rights that need protecting, because they bought under the assumption that they were living in a place that was not a rental area, so that's, you know, the house next door to me I know is a rental, when I bought my house, it was a rental, it will always be a rental, so, but if I bought a house in Marty's subdivision or Drew's subdivision, that are homes that are single-family homes, not rentals, do I have an expectation that those homes are going to be lived in continuously by the owner of the house, that's what I wonder about in this, Lucy?
They can still be rentals.
Agreed, but not three-night rentals, not one-night rentals.
But the difference is the owner's going to be in the house.
Well, it depends, in some cases they're not.
I thought the owner had to be present.
I think we also, the gentleman here that lives in Brenton Manor, I mean, you live in basically duplex, right?
I thought it was.
You're renting out the other half.
No, it's not.
It's a raised ranch with a two-bedroom apartment attached to it, on a corner, there's two driveways, two garages.
Which is the way most of Brenton Manor was built.
The corner lots were built that way if the owner, if the purchaser desired.
So in that particular case, the neighbors expect.
The expectation is there.
I understand your question, however, if I have a bad apple, I don't have to go through an eviction process, they're gone in a couple of days.
Right.
Okay, and I could rent out my whole house for a year and have a bad apple in there, and my neighbors have to deal with that for an entire year, or longer, it doesn't, your concern is not addressing the short- It doesn't, your concern is not addressing the short-term versus long-term discrepancies in the code. It's addressing a bad apple in your neighborhood, but it's got nothing to do with the short-term rental.
I don't, I am just, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I understand that, that's why we're talking about it.
You know, and that's why, you know, I guess it's this expectation when you buy a house, what is the property next door to me? Because when you're buying a house, it's a major investment in your life. So what regulates the house right next door to me? And, you know, like I said.
The laws and the ordinances that are already in the books.
Yes. So that's why I can't help but think that there is a certain amount of due diligence we have to do on this ordinance to make sure, or this rental, or whatever we turn this into, so that it protects not only the people who own the Airbnb, but the people who live next door. Mark?
I guess what I would say that would protect the homeowners around these properties is a dilapidated rundown house is not going to run out at all.
Right.
So it's going to be up to the homeowners to make sure that their properties are attractive. And in some cases, they may end up being more attractive than the people living around them because they want to have something that looks nice that people are going to want to stay at. So I think the protection is, I mean, it takes care of itself because you're just not going to have a rundown property. And you have less of a chance because if I can't earn an income on it, but it's enough that, okay, I'm going to scrape by and I still pay the mortgage, then, or I can't sell it or whatever, I mean, there's a bunch of ways that this solves a lot of problems.
Lucy, you're next.
Well, it says in the bed and breakfast chapter that the owner must reside within the bed and breakfast establishment or in a contiguous property. So they're not, they're not in Florida if they're renting it out.
There has to be somebody there on the property. It could be the owner, you know, agent of some sort, but they're, otherwise, if it's not completely occupied, then it's considered an in and that's not allowed in their zoning, in the residential zoning districts. So that's kind of the difference.
Okay. Oh, sorry, no, wait. Marty was next.
Yeah, I just had to, the only thing that's going to address what your concern is, is a homeowners association. Because if we start deciding whose values are for who lives next door.
I agree.
There's, there is no standard that we will ever be able to address that because somebody might not want somebody with kids, somebody might not want older people, somebody might not want gay couples, somebody might not want people of color. You can't decide any of that. All you can do is, if the people are using their property in a manner that is not disruptive with the laws that we have on the books, then that's how it's addressed. Anything else, it's their property and they should be able to use it just like the other people. You know, you start worrying about what one person's going to do versus another and we're the referees. Nah, no.
I think your point is very valid about HOAs. Mike?
Scott, so with the fire department, did they have any input?
Yeah, they were, they were in favor of making the change.
Making the change away from the sprinklers.
Sprinklers and the alarm, yes, we had conversations with them and they were in favor of that.
Good, okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I was just going to make the comment about the HOAs because like all the townhouses that are out behind Menards, you can't rent those out for any length of time.
At all.
At all.
You cannot sublet it in any.
You can't sublet it in any way, shape, or form.
Nick?
Yeah, I just want to back up and clarify that this is for inns and B&Bs that we're talking about because I think the majority of these short-term rentals are not technically B&Bs where the person is present.
No, they have, they would have to be, the owner has to be present on the property or the agent has to be present. They can't just be vacant and completely rented, otherwise that's considered an in.
So Mr. Frankie's property.
But are we addressing?
He's on the premises because it's adjacent property. Correct, yes.
So are we not addressing the inns right now?
The inns are just not allowed in the, in our residential zoning districts at all.
You can't go to Florida for three months and rent your house out.
Correct, right. Well, you could if you rented this for, you know, three months.
Yeah, then we do it.
Or 30 days, yes, you can do that. But if you can't do it as a short-term rental without being present on the property.
Tony, you had a question?
So of the nine that have been identified, how many of those are owner, have the owner living there or adjacent to it?
All, I think all but one does. And then the one that didn't was converting it to 30-day rentals anyway, so.
Okay.
Actually, I think they said they only did 30-day rentals already anyhow.
Okay. So apart from that one, then, then there's not empty properties that, so to say, that are being rented out on a.
Correct. They're all, the owners are adjacent to the properties that are being rented or within the properties, depending on their circumstance.
And Scott, you did the research by Googling or going on Airbnb, looking for Batavia properties.
VRBO, Airbnb, there were a couple other different sites.
That's how you identified the properties to begin with, okay. And Mike?
So the two people who spoke are Airbnb, so they have their vetting process through Airbnb, they have their insurance through Airbnb. So Airbnb helps them to keep it going in the right direction. And you just said that, you know, you went through Airbnb and VRBO and other firms that deal in this. Are there people out there who are kind of soloing it?
Probably.
And so how do we find those? Because they're the ones I would think we really need to be, we need to concern ourselves with.
Right, I mean, we, when we started doing investigations, we looked at, you know, pretty much every site that you could find, Craigslist, you know, anything that's out there. But that's not to say that, you know, there's some other site that we've missed that, or that somebody's just doing it by word of mouth or anything like that. So, I mean, there may be other ones out there, we just don't know. And that's, you know, what some of these big cities have had issues with is, you know, finding all of these, you know, it's not, it's not like you have one centralized source for all of them, so.
So I guess, I don't know, not to speak for everyone, but it sounds like it's, you know, instead of, you know, burdening the people who are doing it correctly through VRBO or Airbnb, we ought to be looking to straighten up the ones who solo it, who possibly say cutting corners because they don't want to share any of their income. And so how do we do that?
You know, it's just like anything else, you know, we try to find them as best as we can and, you know, maybe word of mouth, you know, comes out. If you have operators that say, hey, I know so-and-so down the road is not doing this, and then we would follow up on it and, you know, and then enforce the ordinances. So, I mean, it's, you know, we try to catch them as, you know, as we can, but, you know, it's.
It's difficult.
It's difficult. I mean, somebody rehabbing their basement, you know, and they're doing it on the weekends at night, sometimes, you know, it's hard for us to catch that.
Or it probably would be generated from a neighbor complaining that this is constantly happening.
Exactly, right.
But then I guess my question would be, I mean, we started this whole conversation because of some bad things. So, and the chief's not here to answer this, but maybe Scott, you could. Is this what we think we have to do to control those bad apples? Or is it, I mean, are we still not going to have a police enforcement problem in this? Or couldn't police enforcement, as been mentioned, take care of this problem so we don't have to affect the people that are trying to do it right?
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, a lot of layers to it. I mean, there's the police issue, there's the fire issue, there's, you know, safe accommodations issues, there's, you know, is it a comparable or compatible use with the neighborhood issue? I mean, there's a whole lot of things, so it's not just, you know, one thing. I mean, that's, that's why this ordinance is pretty comprehensive. It was developed by the state. We adopted it because we felt that, you know, it was appropriate to do that at some point. And, you know, obviously, it's not cast in stone, so if there's things that we think we want to change, you know, we can certainly change that. But that, you know, we followed the model ordinance and that's kind of where we went with it.
Nick?
Scott, well, the bad apples that we keep referring to, those aren't covered with this because those were inns, weren't they?
One of them would have been construed as an in and I think the other one, I don't recall what the other one was, but the one that was the most egregious actually sold. So that one is done.
So we pretty much upended this. We've taken the discussion about whether we should have fire protection or sprinkler systems and turned it into like, do we need this regulation at all? And so I, I think it requires, I don't know what it requires, quite honestly, because when you go through this, I mean, there's a lot in it that we took out of the state, right down to, you know, you need to have fresh towels and things like that every day kind of thing. I mean, there's a lot of information in here that do we need to, do we need to license Airbnbs? I don't know the answer to that and I think that's something we need to make a determination on. I mean, we said that they needed licensing, so Scott went out, got this, came back, said, here's a, here's a policy, what do you think? And so now we're back, we're like backpedaling on that going, well, maybe we don't need to license it at all. And so we need to come up with a determination on that to give direction to him to what we should do.
I think we need to pare it down because the state throws a blanket over everything to cover the state and that's the way it is. We, as a small municipality, need to pare that down a bit from the state because we don't need to blanket everything.
I think, I think the biggest thing out of this is we want to remove it from a conditional use permit, correct? Administrator.
It's expensive to do that, you know, and the whole letting the neighbors know and everything. I'm sure there are people in town who have done this very successfully without a neighborhood complaint ever. So, you know, we just have to determine, is it worth licensing? Is it, is it worth, what is it worth doing? And do we have the staff and manpower to make sure that all the regulations we put in here are met? And so that's, you know, like Dave said, we started this because we had a couple of bad apples that came to our attention. So we said, we need to license this, we sent Scott off on a mission, come up with a way to do this. Scott came back to us, we said, okay, this is what, let's revisit it. And that's where we are tonight. So as we've talked about it, it's starting to sound less and less like we need to do anything. Elliot?
To me, this just sounds excessive. At the end of the day, the answer of if it's worth it or not, when 90% of whatever tax revenue is not even going to come in any ways because it's going to the visitors bureau, then from a monetary side of the city's standpoint, it's not worth it at all. And so it sounds like it's just excessive for the sake of the business owner and when the real problem and crux was the one or two bad apples, and this isn't necessarily resolving those issues because it's noise complaints of which it's enforcement of a different policy altogether, then this just seems excessive.
And, you know, we, living in an area that has a lot of rentals, I can tell you that, you know, people who live there long-term and I have to call 911 on all through the summer are probably worse people than people would visit Batavia for two or three nights at a time. So, you know, it's a, we just have to come up with what's the right thing to do here. So Ellen, you had a comment?
Scott, could you address what the difference would be for, if you have to go through all the process for conditional use versus an administrator review and give them a license?
Yeah, so that, I was, thanks for letting me jump in on that. So essentially, you know, there's two processes that involve, there's the conditional use and then there's the bed and breakfast licensing. So the first thing is the zoning thing. So right now, bed and breakfasts are considered a conditional use in all of our zoning districts, you know, pretty much all of our zoning districts. So in order to run one in the first place, you have to get your zoning approval. That means you have to go through the conditional use process, which involves the public hearing in front of the plan commission, coming to the city council and everything else. One other option that I talked about was the administrative use permit. What that would do is that'd be more like when you have secondary dwellings that are fall under certain categories, you send a notice to the surrounding property owners that, you know, this is what you're going to do. If they object to it, then you send it to the plan commission and then through the whole rest of the process essentially. So, so that would be less onerous. There's still a fee and I think it's a $250 fee or something like that, 200?
200.
$200 fee, so that, you know, so it's a cheaper fee for them to do it. It's less onerous, you know, there's still some notification requirements that are required of that, but it's a quicker process too. So once they get through whatever the zoning process is, then the bed and breakfast ordinance kicks in. They would have to get a bed and breakfast license, they would have to, you know, provide the documentation that's involved in that and then show that they're doing it. Right now, we wouldn't be doing inspections on it, regular inspections on it unless that's what the city council wanted to do. We also don't charge a fee for it. So right now, it's an ordinance that's just there, they just have to comply with it.
I think that would, in my mind, from what we've talked about tonight, that would achieve, I think, what we've talked about. It would protect the neighbors that maybe don't know about it or don't want it or whatever would be there. It would also protect the homeowner so that they would have everything that I think is in the state requirements or in the state law that we adopted and it would give us a sense of knowing where these are in the city.
Laura?
There's just one group that's missing and I think that they are the primary target for a lot of what these regulations are, and that's the people who are renting. So when something is classified as an in, there are certain protections that must be provided to people who are the guests of an in. When somebody is in a long-term lease, there are obligations of the landlord toward their tenant. This is sort of a no man's land created by a new industry. And I think that the state standards were meant to put in place to offer some protections to those people.
Considering there's only nine right now today as we talk about this, what if we said, let's just, like, just not do anything until there's a proliferation of these? There is 25 in Batavia, then let's revisit it. For nine residences, we're putting an awful lot of time and energy and staff time into something that is really not a non-issue. And I think this came up several years ago and the reason we talked about this to begin with is because the house, the Franklin Wright House on the avenue, was being used as a hotel. It was an in. The owners weren't there, they were using it as a hotel. That's how this discussion came up years ago. And then it kind of went away and then the Airbnb thing happened again. And so to Mark's point, I mean, we have laws, Marty's point, we have laws, you know?
But if you remember, when we started talking about this, it started with one.
Right.
And then it got to four and then it became eight, maybe nine. So, I mean, it's, it's a moving target. It, you know, just because there's eight now, it doesn't mean there's going to be, there may be people that, you know, say, you know what, I'm going to start renting tomorrow or people that just say, I don't want to rent anymore. So it's, it's not a constant number, it's going to change all the time. So, you know, it's obviously become more popular and more people are doing it. So, I mean, you know, the entrance level of what they have to do to start doing that is very low. So, I mean, tomorrow, somebody could probably just start renting their house, we could go to 25 instantaneously, so.
Lucy?
I've just been kind of Googling and it seems like there's a term that Laura's referred to called home sharing. And the fact that, you know, it is a whole new industry and the fact that we're using terms like bed and breakfast and in really don't apply here. And I suspect, like Ellen was kind of saying, maybe there's some sort of registry that's, and the process isn't quite as formal as what we're trying to make it and that there might be some legislation, model legislation out there that's evolving right now as we're discussing this. So I think we have to think about it maybe a little differently.
I think that's what we're creating right now. We're taking the state and backing off of it.
Okay, but we might have come up with some ideas that we haven't thought of, that there might be, I mean, we could continue to brainstorm this year or instead of recreating.
Land uses change all the time and different things happen and that's, you know, it's a constantly evolving thing. So, you know, the bed and breakfast term, you know, you don't have to serve bed and breakfast at a bed and breakfast. So it's, you know, that's not required, but it's, those types of uses fall under the bed and breakfast ordinance.
Drew, you got a comment?
Just going to chime in, following up on what Alan said, that's, I think, an approach that makes a lot of sense. I think, I do think we need to know about these kind of businesses and I think what's not concerning is that these kind of businesses exist in our community, that's good. I would worry about, and I know it's been an issue other places, them operating in what we're calling the in-model where it's not an owner-occupied property or the owner's not adjacent, it's somebody that's maybe had a rental property and decided they were going to go, instead of doing regular leasing, just flip it and start using it as a, as going to go, instead of doing regular leasing, just flip it and start using it as a VRBO property, and they live four towns over, are never there, and just put in a little code in the door. That's, I think, probably what we're not interested in, but like what we're talking about here tonight, I think we, if we can find a way to do that administratively without making it onerous, we ought to.
Mark?
The only thing on the administrative thing that you were talking about, Ellen, is protection for the neighbors that don't know about it. I don't know that it really is going to provide any protection, because now they'll know about it, but nothing's going to change. I mean, we're, if they're following the guidelines, we're not going to say no if, so it's not going to make it like, oh, I have a bunch of neighbors that say, I don't want it, they're still going to get it.
Yeah, and that, my point was, we need to know about it so we can make sure it's not an in-type property.
Well, and we need to give them the guidelines, they need to know that they can do it, you know, if they're going to follow this ordinance, that it's more than 10 days and less than 30 days. You know, I think that's the other thing, is if they don't know what the guidelines are, and nobody knows where it is or who's doing it, there's no guidelines for anybody in that situation. There's nothing to fall back, and they can just do what they want. And that's a situation I don't want us to be in.
You could do it without registering at all, you can find some way, some underground, use the dark web.
The dark web. Batavia Rentals on the dark web.
Tony? How many currently are traditional bed and breakfasts do we have in town that have gone through that process of conditional use?
None have gone through the process at all.
Zero.
That's why we came here first, because we already started sending it through the process.
I just want to make sure that, because I don't, you know, but it's, I think this idea of home share, that it's different than the traditional bed and breakfast.
I think, Ellen, your point about notifying the people around you, that kind of stuff, then we go into that not in my backyard thing, that if they never knew about it, or they never really paid attention, now you're sending them a letter and saying, hey, oh, by the way, did you know? And that kind of gets into that weird gray area that we try to not step into often. Did you have something else, Mike? Okay. So, do you have any direction from us on this?
Well, it sounds like what the interest is, is to change the process from a conditional use to more of an administrative use permit. So, we would need to go back to the Plan Commission, have a public hearing to amend the zoning code to change that. But that's, you know, that's okay, that's going to take some time. But, you know, as we've said, we're not doing a crackdown on any of these, you know, we're letting them continue to operate as they have, just because we knew that there were some things that were out there. And then also to change the fire code issues as well.
Could we create, could we be trendsetters and come up with this home share ordinance that we amended our code to include so that it had rules and regulations around it, so that we weren't trying to pigeonhole it in something it doesn't truly fit into?
We'd have to research and see, you know, what's out there, and what other communities, if they've regulated, how they've regulated, because I'm not, I'm not familiar with the level of regulations.
Somebody else do that.
It's obviously, right, it's obviously a trend, you know, it's happening around us, so there's got to be, it's got to be out there.
Again, if they're doing it for 30 days or more, it's a lease, so it's exempt anyway.
Exactly.
I just think the short-term one should be a simpler process to get through.
Right, I agree.
I think it's something that we do need to know about, we do need to have regulations that are out there, people can understand and people can follow. And then when they don't follow them, then we do something about it.
We could always.
It's like the laws we already have.
It does give teeth to the city.
I don't know what the right answer is, because the people that want to follow what the city guidelines are, and they want to do it right, are going to do it right, so we're putting a burden on them. The people that don't care and don't want to do it right, and aren't going to notify anybody, aren't going to come down here and say, what do I have to do to do it right?
But we can see them online.
We can see them online. That's the thing, is if you go and search Batavia on Airbnb, you can pull a list.
Or just Batavia Rentals.
Batavia Rentals, so.
And the other thing is, three of us won't be sitting here in a couple of weeks, and the three people that will be sitting here in a couple of weeks are sitting in the audience, so maybe we'll just wait and dump it on them.
I think that's a good idea.
Your punting is what you're doing.
Let's punt tonight.
By the time we get to Plan Commission, it will be in front of there, so. If you just want to change the logo from Los Angeles to us, it's the Home Sharing Network, the ordinance. It says it, spelled it right out.
We can be trendsetting there.
Just copy and paste.
There you go.
Just one more piece of direction was to learn about the insurance needs.
Yes, please.
Find out about that.
Okay. Are we moving on now?
Well, that was easy.
Thank you.
I'd like to move on, but Susan, if you don't mind, what I'd like to do, because we do have some gentlemen here that have been sitting patiently listening to this whole thing, so if we could, I'd like to jump over and do Resolution, or item number 19, which is Resolution 19 dash 052, R authorizing the execution of a one-year renewable contract for 2019 brush collection service. Because I think they don't need to sit here through the rest of the meeting if they don't mind.
I totally agree.
So, Autumn Wolf, this is up to you.
This is, the Street Division is responsible for administering brush collection services, which provide services to 7,700 single-family residents with our curbside brush pickup seven times a year from May through November. They've been working with Geneva and St. Charles over the winter to plan to bid out the programs together, and this is the result of that. So, Scott is here to explain more for us.
All right, remember that bad winter we had, that's what kind of got in the way a little bit, but the, it became increasingly difficult to kind of mesh ourselves with the contract language and all that. So, each of us decided to kind of go out independently. And in doing so, we, we had the two bidders, Trees or Us and Kramer, they both are represented tonight. And through the course of the bid opening, or our bid document, we did it slightly different, pretty consistent with Geneva and St. Charles, but tried to keep it to a per dwelling unit basis. That way, every year, we can reevaluate that, try to keep Scott from annexing everything around there. But, so, as we add another, you know, 10 or 15 parcels, those will be added, and that price will be fluid a little bit as we go. But through the bidding process, as you see by the numbers, Trees or Us was low, with a $3.97 per dwelling unit per collection, which is basically the seven pickups per year is 27.79 per dwelling unit per season, so it was a total of 7,700 dwelling units that, that total is $213,983 for the season. And Kramer is 408 per dwelling unit, and then 28.56 per dwelling unit per season, and then, again, moving those numbers forward, is 219,912. And then the five-year extended numbers are listed there. So, in going through these, you know, low bidder being the Trees or Us, did, you know, not too familiar with them, they did bid on our program five years ago, and at that time, they were just kind of getting into the industry, and so we felt more comfortable to go with Kramer. And so, at this time, they've, they have plenty of references with performing these services in several different communities. So, with that said, you know, and the references came back positive, so they do the operation very similar to what we're experiencing with the grapple loader and logging-type truck with the grapple arm, so that it's kind of very similar to what we've been using. And in the specs, we didn't have the opportunity for a company to come in and do the chipping operation. So, and then going through the bid, we also required emergency services type hour by, for a man hour, and then equipment hour and such, so we can utilize that in the course of the contract, so that in the event we have some kind of, you know, wind event that is a microburst or something more serious, and it falls on a really bad time for us, and we use, we use that to have, organize a special pickup. And again, I put it in that we've utilized this service about four different times. Two were semi, you know, serious, and a couple were a little less intense. And so, in looking at those numbers, I felt that it would be applicable to bring that conversation to you guys, mainly because of the large difference between those numbers that were proposed in the bids. So, kind of throwing those numbers kind of into our last event that we experienced, which was 2012, and utilizing the hours of the, that Kramer worked in that, in that event, you'd see the numbers, I mean, 2012, the numbers were for the hours that they worked, and the rates that we had from that bid were $31,967. And today, Kramer's numbers would be $37,180, and then Trees or Us would be $84,952. So, yeah, obviously, there's a big difference between the emergency numbers to the, from one contractor to the next. So, it prompted me to kind of communicate with Kevin to just see, because we, obviously, we have a, our base of award is, is so the lowest responsible bidder, right? So, our responsibility is to award to the lowest responsible bidder. And in this case, it just basically falls down to policy. So, whatever we, you know, whatever you guys would like to see as our policy to go forward, meaning, do we want to consider just the bid price of the program, and not necessarily consider the emergency service hours? That would be hypothetical, it's just, it's a shot in the dark whether that would ever play out. I hope it doesn't, but, you know, it's, I'm not a gambler either, so it's, we just don't know. And then if we do take it in consideration, you know, it kind of puts us in a situation where the Kramer might be the most responsible bidder, if that's the case. So, essentially, it just comes down to, and I think I'll be able to use this in the future, bids to include that language in our bid specs, so that, you know, and we don't have to have this kind of, you know, policy discussion, so to speak, at this, at this juncture. So, it's just, it was not something I kind of predicted, so to speak, so it just didn't know we were, I didn't see we were going to have such a big difference between, between the two as far as the emergency hours. So, I guess with that, you know, my recommendation, based on our, you know, conversation with Kevin, and going through all these numbers, it's really, it simply comes down to how the City Council really wants to, if we want to consider the emergency hours, then it certainly is not a way to predict, you know, future circumstances, you know, as I've pointed out, but it's definitely, you know, some kind of a fair assessment of looking forward. So, Trees or Us would probably be the most, you know, I guess you'd call that, Trees or Us would be the lowest responsible bidder, if we want to stick with just the base bid. I feel comfortable that they'll be able to do the job and perform it well. They, I guess, they work in several other communities, so, currently, so. Okay, any questions? Dave?
Scott, under the 2012 event, the transfer truck with the driver was $101 an hour, and that's with Kramer's service. But under the current bid, Kramer's services, transfer truck per hour is $40 an hour. Does that $40, does that line item include the driver to go along with it, or is there going to be an additional charge for the driver, which would be, I guess, the labor along with the 40?
So, the pricing is basically the driver and the truck from, you know, the, yeah, there's the driver and the truck. That's basically what it is.
So, how they figure they want to charge their rates is purely up to them, it's a business, but $40 an hour?
Right, well, they're charging, they're $45 an hour for the vehicle, and they're charging $95 for the, for the employee.
So, it would be a 95 plus the 40?
Yes.
If there, if there's a truck out there with a man in it, it's going to be 45 plus?
Right. So, the 181 rate is the driver and the operator, or the truck and the operator?
Okay, but Trees are, so that puts them, even though it isn't going to bring them up to same, that puts them closer to Trees or Us. Because Trees or Us, does that include, Trees or Us right now, their price is 175, Kramer's 40?
Right, the grapple loader's 295, plus the $95, so that, that's the, that's the rate that they gave us. So, then, then the laborer, so the groundsman, and then the transfer truck driver. So, it's, and those aren't all operating in that 2012 event all the time, that's why the hours are considerably different for the transfer truck versus the loader and...
So, I'm still confused, I don't know if anybody else is.
There's three, there's three things in the 181. There's, there's a groundsman, there's a operator, and then there's the vehicle.
That was the rate in 2012, Dave. Okay. I see what you're saying. So, go down below, because that's identical to what the current bid is, where it says transfer truck slash driver, that's $101 an hour. Okay, so?
Correct.
Under the current bid, the transfer truck per hour, let's start with Trees or Us, would their fee be 175 plus?
Plus the 95.
95? And then Kramer's tree service would be 40 plus 90 or 95?
40 plus the 95.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, the man hours, the man hours are very similar, the equipment, two equipment is the bigger, bigger number. And both contractors, you know, and I had the conversation with Trees or Us, and they're aware that, you know, incidental storm damage that occurs during the month, and that's part of, part of the gig. It's, this is for the, you know, microburst type of event that, you know, certainly occurs on the day after a regular brush collection, and we don't want to have our streets filled with brush for the next month. So, it's, and it's, it's a bit too much for the, to expect the contractor to absorb, you know, when that time comes.
Anybody else? Nick?
Was this the last time that happened, was 2012?
That's the last time.
Before that? I mean, just to give you...
The time before that, as I put in memo, it was a small event in 10, I can't even remember exactly that one. In 2008, it was a little bit bigger, and then in 2007. So, I mean, the frequency isn't the greatest.
Okay, thank you.
And that's if there's a big event. I mean, if it's just a small event and there's debris, you're saying that the contractor will pitch in?
I'm sorry.
You're saying the contractor will pitch in with no cost if it's a small event?
Normal wind damage that occurs during the course of the month, that's, that's considered kind of incidental storm damage. It has to be kind of a, the microburst type event like we experienced on the northwest side in 2012 for this to play out.
Understandably, right.
And during that event, I mean, we, staff, we'd picked up the other three quarters of the town, and this was, this was simply just the northwest side, north of Maine and west of the river. So, it was, I mean, we, staff, we end up taking care of all the incidental stuffs kind of scattered around. It wasn't nearly as bad there as it was at the northwest.
So, Scott, if I understand this correctly, extended over five years, the difference between the two contractors, contracts is $30,000, so about $6,000 a year.
Correct.
So, but if any of these, if we had a major storm event over the five years, once a year for five years, it could more than eat up the cost of that $6,000 savings per year.
Basically, that's what I was trying to point out by these rates. So, it's, again, it's not a, the past history isn't a way to predict the future.
Right.
But it's just, I just want to...
It's just, I wanted to make sure...
Put the numbers out there.
Because I was, I looked at this twice. The first time, I thought, oh, it's a $30,000 cost savings per year, and then I went, no, wait a minute, this is extended over five years, so it's a $6,000 per year cost savings. But the downside is, in a major wind event over any one of these five years, it could eat up that and a whole lot more. So, that's, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding this correctly. Thank you.
Just to that point, though, I mean, just to clarify, this is to discuss a one-year contract. It's a renewable...
This is a one-year. One-year contract, and it's renewable.
Okay. And I do appreciate, I do appreciate you throwing in the history, if you will, of emergency events. I mean, I kind of saw that and thought of it two different ways. You know, one, it's been a while, so that's great. The other is, are we now due? At the end of the day, it's the weather, and nobody knows, including the weather people. So, I mean, I do appreciate the more holistic look, though, of the rates, and not just the one dimension, so.
Yeah. Mark?
Yeah, I think we obviously need to figure this out going forward, a better way to capture both parts of this. I guess one of the concerns that I just got recently from a citizen, and I never want to hear any Batavia citizens say this, but they have Geneva envy, because Geneva's picking up their brush, first brush collection right now. And I think we need to address that. I tend to burn everything in my backyard in my fire pit, so it doesn't affect me, but that's allowed, I'm not doing open burning. So, it doesn't affect me, but there are plenty of people that are picking up in March, and they, now they're sitting with stuff on their curb or somewhere for a couple of months before something gets picked up. So, I'd like to see that addressed, that maybe we're not doing it every month. So, I can... No, I'm not saying, I'm saying just take the seven and do it at different periods of time. Do the same, wouldn't change anything, you just change the frequency.
Garrett?
We've been down that road before, and the contractors have basically told us that if we're still only doing seven pickups, we're still going to get, we're going to get the same amount of brush, people are just going to hold on to it and then put more out at the curb the next month. So, that's why we kept the seven months together continuously, and didn't spread them out or didn't skip a month, because if we skipped a month, then you're just going to get two months worth of brush the next month. So, the decision by council was made to... So the decision by council was made to do it in the fall. When I first started here, it was do it in the spring. We could just add another month, then you got both the fall and the spring, but that's a cost issue for you guys to consider. So, yeah, it's, that's one issue, that's very valid discussion. Would you rather have the emphasis in the spring? Would you rather have the emphasis in the fall? Or do you want to pay extra and do both? That's one point. The second point is with regards to brush collection. So it's $30,000 guaranteed savings upfront, with a, with a, the risk on the back end, or it's pay $30,000 more upfront, and that's your insurance policy against the risk on the back end. And Alderman O'Brien, to your question, if it's a routine, quote-unquote, storm event, where we don't have to send the trucks out for a special collection, people can just hold on to the brush and the very next week, we're coming by with brush collection, even though that it may be more brush that month, because we had this storm event, it's still just a normal brush collection. If we have to send the trucks out for a special pickup, that's what we're talking about.
The problem with trying to anticipate, you know, a 2012 event, again, is none of us are actuarials, so we actually don't know if the 2012 is right even more. Going to your point, we might have something even a lot bigger than that, which is going to eat this savings. So I don't, I'm kind of concerned when you're starting to try to figure out, based on one storm, that that was the highest seven years ago, and we've had nothing, versus there could always be the tornado that comes through town and takes it all, takes a lot of the stuff. So trying to make policy on future, not a lot of data to go on, is going to be really hard.
Yep. Tony?
I would, I would add to that, you know, that we're seeing in the climate more severe events. There's no doubt about that. And I, we can expect we're going to have more severe events than 2012.
I figured you were going to say-
I don't have to say anything.
Preempt, Mike, we knew that was coming anyway.
And, and, you know-
He said it for you.
I just, I recall seeing, reading your report on this winter's sultan and plowing.
What did you say about that Gary earlier today? December 15th, you said we were doing fine?
Yeah.
And then?
Don't remind you of that.
Anybody on the council have a comment? I know we have somebody in the audience who'd like to come up and talk about it.
As a homeowner-
Come up and use the mic, so we can all hear you, and so you can get on TV.
I have to commend you, Scott, for not filling in the blanks on this after what happened with the garbage.
As a homeowner and a really big gardener, not being able to get rid of stuff this time of year is a problem, because you've had all winter that stuff has been happening. And this is the time of year when the big cleanup is done. So if we could get things cleared out in March, it would be wonderful. In July and August, there's not much happening. And just eliminate one of the summer months, still keep the same amount, but just have a hiatus in the middle of summer, would be wonderful. That's all.
Thank you.
We're not related.
Anybody else?
Do you guys have anything that you want to add?
Please give us your name for the record.
I'm Nick Willis, Vice President of Trees or Us Incorporated. Thank you for moving this up on the agenda. I appreciate it. Scott did it really well. Good job of outlining both the normal brush pickup and the emergency pickup as well. Considering that Trees or Us is low bid on the actual five-year extended year totals, when we had bid the project, in the contract, we had read that the, the basis of award was going to be based on the unit costs plus whatever extended pickups, based on, then extended out to the exact total. In the contract, the, the emergency fees were not exactly put into the total. It was like an, almost like an incidental type thing. So therefore, I believe that the, the emergency fees are kind of exactly that. The last storm back in 2012 was seven years ago. Prior to that, there was three others. In a total of 12 years, you've had four storms, two of them somewhat significant, two not so significant. If you were to factor that all out into these bids, we would still be low bid under that. The storm numbers are also, or the emergency rates are also an unknown number prior to the bid. Prior to us bidding this, or any other contractor bidding this, there was nothing in the bid packet based on numbers that Scott had provided that is now making us not the low bid. Whether or not that's relevant, I don't know. If you use the 2008 and the 2010 storm numbers, that also proves that the storm rates are not really relevant in the $30,000 savings that the city would get, that is a known cost for the five-year term. There's also the way that, if it does go to the route, that the, the council is deciding to use the emergency rates. In the bid, when we were bidding, the grapple truck with driver and the transfer truck with driver, it was bid four different ways. But the reason why our rates for the grapple truck and transfer truck were significantly higher than Kramer's price for those two, was because we included our labor for that truck into that price. So therefore, with that being said, the total cost of the emergency is a little bit different than the spreadsheet that Scott had given you, because we included in the 295 for the grapple truck, that includes our driver and our labor that runs on that truck, because, in my opinion, can't run a truck without a driver. There was no verbiage in the contract that said you would have to add two different units to come up with a final unit. And I've got a spreadsheet here that shows the difference in the saving-
Savings, if I can spread this, pass this on?
Scott, while he's doing that, was there anything in the contract about safety records or provision of EMRs?
Thanks, Scott.
In the contract, was there any requirement for them to furnish their safety records or EMRs?
I, no, I don't have any of that in their, in the requirements of the bid spec.
Did you check on their safety records at all?
I did not, no. Neither community that we communicated with made any reference to any safety issues. Very little callback info.
Scott, who did you communicate with? What other communities?
I'm sorry?
What other communities did you get feedback from?
Naperville, Hoffman Estates, Glen Island, Streamwood-
Okay, thank you.
... Towneville.
So this is Bill Thompson. This is my logistics manager. He helped put together the spreadsheet, based on the fact with our rates, that we had included in the bid, that our grapple truck and our transfer truck, which is the hours that were used to show the difference from Kramer's prices to our prices, factored out, and then with the totals and everything on the right-hand side. I'll let Bill explain how he did it.
Good evening. We looked at these numbers, and, and Nick, right away realized what was going on with the bid, that we'd put, put the cost, the employee and the driver into this truck. So we, we refigured this really quick. When you factor in that we're already putting in at 295, you've got your driver and your helper, it comes out to $27,626 instead of the $45,420. When you amortize that down, instead of $84,952 for that same event, it comes down to $61,958. So we're talking a difference. They were at 37, we were at 61, so difference of $24,777. If you go over the five years, you're still ahead. If it was, and that was your, that was your biggest event. And as, as I said, you can't base your opinions on what might happen. But looking at these numbers now, knowing that those rates are a little bit skewed, because we didn't, not knowing that the, our numbers, we had our, our drivers and that figured into it, whereas Kramer was adding their driver later on, the numbers aren't that far off anymore. So I think that that would make you feel a little bit more confident in the fact that we can do the job and still, even on your emergency rates, be within a reasonable rate of what Kramer would be on their emergency rates.
So if I'm hearing, hearing you correctly, take the, I'm looking at the table here, and the, the grapple loader, your rate is 295, that's inclusive of the equipment and the driver?
Exactly.
295 total.
Exactly. And to get to Kramer's, you would add-
Kramer would be 45 for the grapple and 95 for the, well, foreman, or 90 for the labor, so 140.
Well, you, you would have a driver, if you, if you set the same way that we are setting it up, with a helper and a driver, you would have the grapple operator and a helper. So you'd be at 95 with, with their driver, and 90 for their helper-
Okay.
-and then $40 for their truck. So they would be at $230, and we're at 295. We're talking a difference of $65. And we thought that that was a very important point to make, so that everyone understands the true numbers going into this.
Right. So if you look at the overall true numbers for an event listed there, Kramer's would come out at $37,000, and you would be at $61,000.
Right, for that exact same event. For a difference of $24,777. Which is, which is, you're still saving $4,867 if you have one of those major events over the five-year period.
Yeah, and in the last term, according to the records, there was not a emergency event that was placed under this emergency fee.
Anybody else have any questions?
And based on what the city attorney said, it is a policy decision as to whether we accept the lowest bidder or not, right? We don't have to accept the lowest bidder based, it's a policy decision.
One thing else, I was keeping, just as-
Scott, use the mic, please.
As I pointed out, it, it is a one-year renewable contract. So if there's, you know, something that blows up, that we have to pay, end up having to go and do something that, as far as the, something doesn't work out, as far as what they're saying on the hourly rates, you know, it is certainly something that, once we conclude the year, we can end that contract and then go rebid it out.
Well, you'd write the contract with that language in there, right, that these pieces of equipment include the driver and the helper?
It's, it's basically-
The way you bid it out, I guess, is the way it has to be written, right?
Right. To include a driver, it, none of the prices are inclusive. So all the pricing that I request are individual. So for the, so as I, emergency work, labor, and equipment rates, and basically it goes foreman, equipment operator, and per hour cost. And the next item is labor, groundsman, per hour cost. Then the next item is driver, transfer truck, if applicable. So there's a per hour rate. Then grapple loader is a per hour rate, and then transfer truck is an hourly rate. So it's, in my mind, it's pretty clear that I was looking for man hours for certain job tasks, and equipment for certain job tasks. At, at, at no point did I state that there was, and, and transfer truck should include an operator, and that the grapple loader didn't include a groundsman and an operator. I'm not making that assumption that, that they're, they're including three guys in that operation, or two guys in that operation.
But I think after tonight's discussion, I mean, amongst the public, that we can, if they've said that they are including a laborer in that, in that cost, then that becomes the cost. They can't come back later and say, well, no, we really didn't include a laborer in that cost.
Right. I can't make that-
So I know you can, but I mean, they've kind of stated that tonight, and that's what I'm supposed to assume, that there's a laborer in that cost.
Right. But that would be a very fair thing to do for Trees or Us. But as far as Kramer's concerned, if they interpreted the bid the way Scott is kind of laying it out here-
The other way.
-that goes the other way.
Yeah, nowhere on the hourly rates does it say grapple truck driver or, or transfer truck driver. It just says foreman and labor. So the way we interpreted it was, there's a foreman on the job, or there's a laborer on the job. I think that was the way it was interpreted by us.
There is a third option, if we really want to stir up the pot. And that is to award based on, I mean, this is a one-year renewable contract. The contractors obviously bid on this with the assumption that they're going to get all five years, because that's how they would have set up their pricing, and I don't blame them for doing that. If we really want to stir up the pot, and legally, we probably have the option to award a contract, not renew, basically make it a one-year contract, and then, as Alderman, you were suggested, go out with maybe different language with regards to the emergency next year. I don't really want to necessarily go down that road, and that leaves more burden on Scott, but that is an option if we're not comfortable with how the language is written on the emergency side.
I mean, I look at it, the numbers, even with however you want to interpret the truck and the driver, they're still apart, right?
Hold on.
$14,000. Or, no, $24,000.
That's only if that storm happens, and in 12 years, you've had two storms, and this is the worst storm you've ever had. The last term of this contract, this rate wasn't even in effect.
Because that's why the, the flip of that is, they're always saving $30,000.
Exactly.
Right.
You can't budget on a what-if.
Right.
Over five years.
Yeah, but on the same hand, I mean, I, I'm a little bit torn on this. You guys seem like nice guys.
I'll be honest with you, it, it's difficult on us, too. I'm sure Kramer's probably going crazy back there as well. You, it's anyone's game. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I hate to see this thing go the other way, and not with us, but it makes it hard on us. How do you bid on something where there's unknown numbers?
Well, but, but, as I was trying to say, you guys seem like nice guys, and I'd like to give you the opportunity. You came back with good references. Kramer's been here for a lot of years. They've done a good job. Obviously, there's a good reference there. When I do a bid in the business I'm in, I may interpret something wrong also. And I lose, because staff says this is the way I intended this, this bid to go out, and this is the way they interpret it. So I lose, because I interpreted it the wrong way. I guess my, my point would be, if you, if you're putting together a bid, and you're thinking that this should maybe include a driver, and it maybe should include a laborer, then you should ask that question before the bid goes in, so you're clear. Because, I mean, I, I got to tell you, I, I think, I commend you for really putting this work together to try to grab this contract, because you're doing a good job of, of selling it. Because not too many people would anticipate that you would need a driver and a laborer to go along with a truck line item in the bid. So you, you've, you've made the numbers work to your advantage. And I think, I commend you for trying to do that, because you're trying to get work. But I think, really, in my opinion, I think, really, we have to go with the lowest, most responsible bid, which would be Kramer. And I think we're going, and in my opinion, I'm going with that recommendation, based on Scott's interpretation of the way he writ the contract, wrote the contract.
I want to counter that, in that what we're, what we're being asked to do is have them anticipate contract language when it's now being presented to us, to make that decision after it already went out. So in a way, we're deciding something that we're saying that they should have anticipated, when staff is now bringing it to us, saying, we didn't anticipate it, and you can go either way. So is it fair to put that burden on everybody else? So is it fair to put that burden on everybody else that's bidding going forward, put the onus on them to decide all those variables that they can't control now comes to us, and it says, "This is the way the bidding process is," but things can be always interpreted on contracts, always, always, always. And if we're deciding that after the fact, then it kind of puts it on an uneven playing field.
To answer your question, Mr. Brown, we actually did have a question resulting in something totally different at first about bonding, and we never received an answer email. So at that point, it was kind of hard to go further into the contract with any kind of questions, because our first question was never answered regarding bonding.
It did enter.
I'm sorry?
It did enter.
Okay, well, we didn't receive anything. Neither here nor there. To answer your question about the interpreting the numbers, these storm numbers just came up last Thursday, I think, when this email, or when this email was sent to us, saying that now we're going off these numbers for determining low bid, and we're entering a storm that has high volume of hours into it, in which case blows us out of the water, essentially. So if these numbers are going to be, come into play, I feel that they should have been in the bid that was actually being bid right off the get-go. It's like the emergency numbers were kind of thrown in as an afterthought, saying, "Okay, this is how it's going to be. Yeah, you're a little bit on the base bid," which is usually the total number of what's going on, and then there's alternates that follow through. But then there was this different cost that came in of hours that was unknown to us prior to bidding, that now is a factor and makes us high bid.
I think you bid out unit hours to it, so I think that's what we're comparing for. Just because we use X or Y scenario and hours shouldn't matter.
Yeah.
You bid out the hours to it.
All the public bids I put together, they always ask for unit prices.
Right.
And those are there for the consideration in their determining of the lowest, most responsible bid.
I think that Scott just extrapolated it out and said, just, I mean, he just took an event.
Give an example.
It could have been anything, but it's just like, if we were to have an event, how much would it cost? So.
Yeah, and it could be an event that doesn't essentially eat up the thirty thousand of savings, that's unknown savings, or it could. That's the hard part, I guess.
Do we have somebody here from Kramer? I mean, do they want to talk about this as long as we're having both bidders?
Yeah, I'm sorry for eating up all the time.
No, it's okay. If we've got both bidders here, if they want to say anything-
Sure.
This is really unusual for us to get this in depth in a-
Right.
I know.
Well, you know, while they're walking up, it still is a problem, because what is the most responsible bidder? You've got two things. We don't know if that extra event is going to happen.
So that's where we went to the city attorney.
Yes.
Because we had that same question.
Right.
And Kevin has basically said, and that's how we started our presentation, that counsel can elect you to award on the base bid, which is a guaranteed thirty thousand dollar savings over the course of five years, or Kevin can also justify from his perspective as city attorney to say, "No, these other numbers related to emergency services are a factor, and therefore the award would be based on that factor." So to answer your question, it really truly is falls down to a council decision on guaranteed savings versus risk, you know, one way or the other.
So my question moving forward, are there other situations where we, the risk is put in onto the contractor, where we say, "Here's what we want, and if X, Y, or Z happens, you're responsible. What's your total cost of handling it all?" They take on the risk instead of us looking at two numbers. We could never really balance this question out.
No, but I don't know that you could say to a contractor, "You take on all risk for the next five years, because we could have four tornadoes in the next five years, or we may go from 2012 to 2019, seven years with no problem."
Right, I know, but you're putting the onus, I mean, right now, it proves that the way we're doing it is not-
You also pay a premium for that option, too.
What's hap-
You also pay a premium every year for that option.
Obviously, because you're buying insurance.
Again, may never happen.
You're buying insurance, but it's odd that, this is the first time in six years I've seen us in the business of calculating risk in a decision. Do we think something's going to happen? Do we not think something's going to happen?
This is the nature of this contract.
Yes.
I mean, this contract is, you're not going to have a sudden outbreak of mosquitoes where you're going to, I mean, you just have a per spraying cost. I'm trying to use that analogy, because brush collection is a little unique in that respect.
No, I get it, and for snow and salt, we take on that risk.
We do, we do it internally.
Right. So it's a six, it's a six thousand dollar a year insurance policy we're paying. That's really what it comes down to.
Yep.
Six thousand dollars every year we're paying extra if we go with Kramer as an insurance policy against whatever calamity may come upon us.
The cost difference.
The cost.
Insurance policy against the cost difference in the contract.
Right.
Artie? Yeah, but actually, Nick brings up a good point, because these are five-year contracts, and this being as this is the first one, we should have had a five-year term where we would have had that built in, because it's 2012. So where is the five-year contract or the five-year period? The last time that we did this should have had that built into it. If, because it's prior than five years, so it stands to reason, why are, just like you're saying, why are we doing it now instead of within the five-year period after that storm event?
I don't understand your point.
They're one-year renewables, they're not five-year contracts. We don't sign a five-year contract.
But in the six years that we have had this, we have not had this brought to us before, where this risk has ever been addressed in those six years.
Because we're changing contractors, and the rates are hugely different.
But they're not if we're basing it off of the lowest rate, which we've done every year prior.
And this was added on after the original bid was turned in, is that?
The comparison was made by taking the unit prices that were included in the bid and saying, "Here's an event." Doesn't have to be an event from 2012, we could have just said, "Here's a forty-hour cleanup that we had to do." And we would have used those per-hour numbers to come up with the two different sets of numbers.
Just one quick question for Gary. When we went out to bid last time, how many bidders were there?
Oh, last time, we did have two bidders.
We did.
That was the first time that-
Both bidders that are here tonight were-
But at that point in time, Trees-RUs was just really starting.
Mostly it was just always Kramer, right?
Prior, most, prior to that, it was always just Kramer, yes. So in that time period since the last time we went out, Trees-RUs has had opportunities to work for other municipalities.
Gained that experience.
Yeah, gained that experience, exactly.
I'm sorry, we called him up.
Okay. Give you the opportunity, while we're debating about this.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Kramer from Kramer Tree Specialists. I know, a lot of you know a lot about us, so I'm not going to bore you with our history, but what is relevant here is we have been forming brush programs for over twenty-five years. The way Batavia picks up brushes, the way we developed and pioneered that system. We have been creating value and reducing costs for our clients in these brush programs, and when a storm is relevant to these programs, this is, it has taken us over a decade to take storms into considerations for communities and reduce our emergency work for that part of our business. Storm work, whether it's in this community or one of the other communities we take care of, is very demanding on equipment and men demands for any company. That has become a challenge for us, and we have learned how to deal with those challenges and the demands on the men and equipment during those times, which is why our rates are much less, they're pretty much our normal working rates when an emergency hits. That has taken us many years to perfect, but we're confident that we can provide that service and have provided that service, emergency service, along with brush programs. It does dictate the load per year a community demands to be picked up, so. We, in all fairness, did understand, the way Scott laid out, the men and equipment is actually very, very common in our industry, anyway. When you have men in different, we have, you know, hundreds of different pieces of equipment, and they all come with some as low as five dollars an hour, some as much as eighty dollars an hour. So it is very common to see a rate sheet like Scott provided here, and to put money where it's appropriate for equipment and men. So I don't know if anybody had any questions for us.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mark?
No, it's not a question, it's just a comment on this. So if we, yeah, you know, we have to play some of the risk game here. If we look at, if we had a five-year period that was like 2007 through 2010, we'd get killed by Trees-RUs. If I look at Trees-RUs price, there, what's, it's not the labor that's the problem, it's the tip fee, is the difference between the two would be sixteen thousand. If you take a ten thousand, I don't know if it's as easy to say, like a twelve thousand dollar event, and, which is a third, quoting roughly a third of what the big event is, so if it's a third of that, the big event that they're comparing right now would be sixty-one thousand. So a third of that would be twenty. We'd still be, we've lost our savings in one smaller event. If we have three very small events, we've lost our savings. That's my fear on it, is that if anything hap, yes, we could, after one year, we could say, "We don't like it, but what if we have a big event and it costs us thirty thousand dollars more?" We've lost well more than we would have if we were to go with Kramer, which we know would be cheaper. So you have to play the risk game and assume that something is going to happen. I'd rather assume something's going to happen and it costs us more than six thousand dollars than assume nothing is going to happen.
I agree.
And it's not like we have any complaints with the service we have. I mean, we went through this with garbage pickup.
Yep.
We stayed with a little bit more expensive service, because everybody liked it, no complaints.
So I'm going to say, you know, Trees-RUs, thank you, but I'm going to go with the Kramer, who, as Tony said and as Mark said, I just, you know, I feel about the climate change, and so-
Hundred-year fence.
It's coming.
Can you explain?
Every year, it's coming.
Okay. So Alan, I think we need to wrap it up. You want to do it?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Please.
When Mr. Kramer just gave his statement, he said that he's working to save and reduce the cost for the cities. However, every time Kramer Tree is bidding these contracts, the price is continuously going up. If you guys, a city is a council, the city itself never lets another company in, there's no competition, he's got a monopoly. So once we're eliminated, you guys, I mean, the city is essentially stuck with Kramer from here on out, is kind of what's being said, is from what I'm hearing. And you're eliminating your bidding pool, there's two bidders. It's us and Kramer. It was last time. Totally understand, we didn't have the references we needed. We went out, we got those references, came back, we're ready to rock and roll. It is a one-year renewable. If we fail, give it to Kramer. Or here's another thing, too. If our emergency rates are too high, have us do the normal removals, let Kramer do the emergency. If they're so confident their emergency rates are that good, and they can hold their emergency rates and only their emergency rates, and not upcharge your normal pickup service, let them take the emergency. We'll take the normal pickups. They can hold their own, we'll hold our own. The city will make the best of both worlds.
Scott, could I put you on the spot? You're the guy that gets to deal with whatever company's chosen.
Well, I think that trying to split that would be very difficult, and would be, you would have to just go start all over, and we're not in the timing to be able to start all over. It, you know, as Nick said, you know, there's, we could let them go for one year and see how it goes, and if there's a, you know, horrific event that costs us a lot of money, then the contract ends and we bid it out. If we feel comfortable with, you know, don't feel comfortable with their emergency rates, then Kramer's the way to go, and, you know, it, again, I don't think, I think Nick's company can do, you know, do the job, and I think they'll do a fine job.
Something we haven't asked yet tonight, how does that compare to last year's rate?
Same.
It's the same rate as-
Basically, within a few thousand of what last year was.
Okay.
Right around, I think exactly Kramer's number is exactly what they were last year.
So the four oh eight per unit-
Yeah.
Is what the cost-
Last year's contract was not a per-unit cost, but the-
Your overall cost.
The overall yearly cost was-
It was two nineteen, virtually the same. Is that something-
So I'm going to make a motion that, and I'm going to do this only in this order so that we get it off that center here, it doesn't mean that I'm supporting one or the other when I make this motion, but I'm going to make a motion that we recommend the city council approval of the brush pickup with Trees-RUs Incorporated for an amount of two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars per season with the one-year renewable agreement.
Second.
Which company?
I'm sorry.
Trees-RUs.
Yeah, with Trees-RUs.
I didn't hear what you said clearly, I wanted to make-
I'm sorry, yeah, so my motion is to recommend the city council the contract to Trees-RUs.
Motion by Brown, second by Callahan.
And what will happen here is if Trees-RUs gets the majority of the votes, obviously they get the contract, if Trees-RUs, because of the way I made the motion, if Trees-RUs does not get the majority of the votes, then the contract will be awarded to Kramer.
And this is being recommended to city council? Recommending this to city council? Do we want to do a roll call on that? Who was the second? Callahan.
Brown?
Oh, boy.
You made the motion.
You motioned.
Good job, motioning her.
I just wanted to get a, you know, get it moving here.
Because it's ten to ten.
Aye. Jenny? You want to continue the roll call?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't-
He just said aye.
I'm getting really hard. Oh, sorry. Sorry, guys. It's late. It's getting late. I'll blame it on that. O'Brien?
No.
I heard that, thank you. Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
No.
Ewer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
No.
Rosato?
No.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
No.
Chanset absent, Wolf?
No.
And Salvati?
No.
There's five As, eight NAs.
So the contract goes to Kramer Services to be recommended to city council.
Do we need to make a motion to the positive to send that to council? Probably shouldn't.
Probably shouldn't, yeah.
I would say we should do it. Would you like, care to make that motion, or like someone else to do that?
I'll make a motion that we recommend the city council award the brush contract to Kramer Services for two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twelve dollars per season.
We have a second. Second by Ewer. Roll call.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset absent, Wolf?
Aye.
And Salvati?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passed. What was the end vote on that?
Ten to three.
Ten to three.
Ten to three. Okay, so we'll go to city council with a recommendation to award the contract to Kramer Services, but thank you very much for your attendance in this. All right, let's jump back to the regular agenda.
Oh, yeah.
We've got a few more here to go, I don't know how long we're going to go. Ordinance nineteen dash twenty-eight, Alderman Stark.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll go to city council with a recommendation to award the contract to Kramer Services, but thank you very much for your attendance in this. All right, let's jump back to the regular agenda.
Oh, yeah.
We've got a few more here to go. I don't know how long we're going to go. Ordinance 19-28, Alton Stark.
Okay. This is the discussion of approving the final plat of subdivision for Prairie Commons' first re-subdivision and this, did we skip one? Or in 11?
Or in?
Ordinance 1928? Yes.
1928. The ordinance, I think, was first on the agenda, but we can only include number 11.
Got it. My, I had pooped out through this.
Drew, why don't you take it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So essentially, the ordinance 1928 is a couple of different fixes to the zoning code. The first kind of component of it was dealing with accessory structures and kind of dealing with the, the fact that there really isn't a lot of regulation on size of accessory structures. We have a couple of things that regulate that, but then there are aspects like with sheds under 120 square feet, those don't count towards floor ratio, so technically, you know, that allows the ability to have several sheds and I think the discussion, or the, the idea of putting basically some limitations in place, kind of based on lot size, for accessory structures was the idea. So essentially, in terms of the accessory structure requirements, I highlighted basically three changes. One was where we have a increasing setback at one to two feet for, based on height of accessory structures, changing that to one to one, that was to simplify things. The second was to create a threshold of a limitation of three total accessory structures on lots under one acre and then a limitation of five over lots of greater than one acre. And then there was a square footage based on the lot size that is set for under one acre, basically having a threshold of 700 square feet max or 10% of the lot size, whichever is less, and then 1,000 square foot for lots over an acre. Idea is just basically that lots that are larger can accommodate some of those larger buildings. The other change, the, the big change for chapters six and seven is to merge those into one chapter. The one other change that's related to accessory structures and just how we apply the code is a simplification of how we handle grade plane. We've had a couple of cases where grade plane is looked at, looking at the overall structure, which we've had a couple of variances as, or modifications to the conditional uses to, based on the anticipation of needing those. So basically, because of how it's written now, you kind of have to have final engineering worked out to figure out how tall the building is. So we're trying to simplify that to just say, you know, where's your building in relation to the front of the lot and say, okay, if it's farther away from the front of the lot line, here's how to measure it and it's just based on the average along the frontage. Otherwise, for buildings that are closer, it's based on two measurements, just to kind of get an average, to basically say, here's the number, rather than go through final engineering and figure out what, what your height is. So those are the main changes. The one item that we put in the memo that since the plan commission review was a discussion about the use of basically trailers or.
Shipping container?
Shipping containers. That we had an inquiry about using shipping containers for accessory structures and so we figured since we're discussing accessory structures, there might be a conversation about whether we would want to allow that with some sort of design consideration or disallow it. One item that, one way to do that would also be to basically define those and prohibit those as accessory structures. That's one way to do it. There's other ways, perhaps, of requiring some sort of appearance review of the size of those or requiring that they be painted or things like that, but, you know, that was put out there for discussion. So we're putting the ordinance before you tonight for consideration and go from there.
Thank you. And so we don't have to talk about the accessory, or the shipping container tonight, we can move that to another agenda.
That can be on another agenda, but we do have an ordinance right now that we could address it now if we wanted to.
Susan?
Yes.
Drew, is there any urgency in this one tonight?
No, we could do this.
I would just table this one because I think you could get into a lot of good conversation about this.
Absolutely. I agree.
Okay. We have some items on the 23rd, I think, scheduled, so we could put it on the cow if that, if that works.
Does that work, Susan?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Thank you, Drew.
Okay.
Can I ask just one question?
Sure.
Is there any need to discuss well and septic when discussing the accessory structures?
I don't think particularly, based on the changes that we're proposing.
No, just in general. It seems like what I've been told in the past, that those are big obstacles, but maybe they're not. And I guess.
And are you talking about placement of accessory structures on a property with a septic field or?
Well, where you hook up and how you hook up. But I didn't mean, but anyway, if it's not a big deal, never mind.
Wouldn't it have to be hooked with the city water and sewer, couldn't be hooked with well and septic?
Did I say septic? Did I say well and septic? I'm sorry, I meant city sewer and water.
The only time, well, with accessory structure, the only time you would, if you.
Why don't we save this thought? We've already tabled.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Lucy. All right, resolution 19-046, approving the final plat of subdivision for Prairie Commons' first re-subdivision, Alton Stark.
Got it. On April 3rd, the plan commission reviewed this and it came out of, planned commissioned by a vote of five to zero with one absent, one vacancy, they recommended approval of the plat of subdivision subject to the conditions specified in resolution 1946-R. Drew, is there a lot of explanation that goes with this one or?
Essentially, two of the lots that are being created with this plat were originally contemplated with Prairie Commons, it's just they had an engineering issue they had to work out. That's been resolved with basically the work they've been doing with the, with FEMA in terms of the LOMAR process, which is for about the flood plains. So that's been resolved. And then the other item that's being addressed is that basically the building envelopes, as we've gone through the building permit process, need to be a bit larger to take into account the, the, the back balconies on the urban units. So this plat would be addressing those on the urban units, basically vacating three feet of easement on each of those lots and then creating larger lots for that. And so this plat will help facilitate allowing that to proceed with the, the units that are under construction now.
Anyone have any questions to Drew on this one?
Staff recommends that we approve this resolution as presented. Okay. I make a motion that we send to city council, resolution 1946-R, approving the final plat of subdivision for Prairie Commons.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by Salvati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Consent?
Sure.
Okay. Thanks, Drew. Item 13, resolution 19-033-R, authorizing execution of a contract with performance construction and engineering LLC for the 2019 Ward 1 storm sewer reconstruction phase two for an amount not to exceed $1,443,712 and 60 cents. Alton and Wolf.
Thank you. This was, went out to bid earlier this year and the bids were opened on Thursday, March 14th. This project includes large diameter stormwater sewer, precast box culverts, water main replacement, concrete curb and gutter, sidewalk and restoration among, among other items. Expected completion for this is August 30th of 2019. This is, of course, in Ward 1, supersized stormwater sewer pipes for Mike in this and another phase in our quest to get rid of the stormwater problems that plague Ward 1. Anything you would like to add, Rohat?
No, thank you for the explanation. The project is, this is the second phase of the four-year project, so this is the second year of the project. We are going to start or do the replacement along Larkspur Lane from Gisey to Chilum and then continue on to Chilum to Bluestem, to, to Bluestem Lane and then go north up to Lexington. So that's the project and, and as the memo explains, we had an alternate bid on this project, so after the storm sewer and water main replacement, we are going to patch the street and grind and overlay the entire street. Last year, it was a little different, we patched it and we, we left it patched, but this year, we wanted to see how the price comes out to be if we resurface, so the residents get a brand new street, if you want to say, like the area three, and, and we wanted to see whether the increment of price is, is that much higher, is there a value in it? And it's coming out to be about $10 a square, square yard for the street to get resurfaced, which in our experience is a really good price for a street to be resurfaced. So we are recommending to this, to, to the committee that we approve the contract with the alternate, which is resurfacing the street after the, after the construction is done. And, and the budget is higher than the bid amount. We are asking that we are given a 10% contingency amount, which will put us over the budget if we do use up all 10%. We, we are hoping that it will not happen, but if it does, we are already seeing some cost savings from other projects like Mahoney Creek project, which is later in the agenda, that we'll be able to balance within the budget that we have and, and go forward.
Any questions? Mike?
So if we did the design and the engineering correctly, the contingency shouldn't go anywhere.
Yes.
Okay. I, I do applaud you saying that, you know, we're going to do the grinding and overlay and I did look on the bid documents also, there's 232 of them, but that you had street sweeping.
Yes.
And so I applaud that also because we had some issues last year regarding the street sweeping and so I appreciate you putting that in.
Mark?
With the, the second part of it for the, the engineering portion of it, is there any increase to that for the grinding and paving?
No. We did present it to them saying we will go with either option and, and they are going to give us the price for that option, too.
Lastly, too, though, we're not, when we overlay, we just go and flush with the curb flag.
Yes. Yes, we are grinding, we are grinding two inches, so the patches will stay low and then we'll come and grind the rest of it, match it to the edge of the curb.
The curb with the flag, right.
That is correct.
You're, you're not doing that down, down Gisey, though, correct?
No, no. So Gisey will be more like an access road to all this construction, Gisey will probably be done at the, at the end of the project.
Okay.
Right.
That's terrible. Okay. Any other comments? If not, I'll make a motion that we recommend to council, resolution 19-33-R, authorizing execution of a contract with performance construction and engineering for the 2019 Ward sewer reconstruction phase two for an amount not to exceed $1,443,712 and 60 cents.
Second.
Okay, motion by Wolf, second by O'Brien. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, you going to talk about that?
Yeah, we should talk about that, want some people to know what's going on.
Next one, resolution 19-34-R, authorizing execution of task order number three for construction engineering with Baxter and Woodman for an amount not to exceed $108,645. Alton and Wolf.
This is the construction engineering for the project that we just talked about. Anybody has any questions? I've already answered one of them.
Is Baxter and Woodman, are they on the preferred list?
Yes, they were shortlisted.
They were shortlisted.
Yes.
Okay. They're very good outfit, I mean.
Yes, they, they work for us and, and we were very happy with their performance last year.
Okay. That said, I'll make a motion that we recommend to council, resolution 19-34-R, execution of a task order number three for construction engineering with Baxter Woodman Incorporated for the amount not to exceed $108,645.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by O'Brien. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That can go consent.
Nah, we probably should.
They go together, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, item 15, resolution 19-50-R, the construction contract for the 2019 stream restoration for Mahoney Creek, Mahoney Creek Tributary at Woodland Hills and Mahoney Creek at Wilson Street with CNH Escavating Incorporated in a amount not to exceed $248,029 and 10 cents.
Okay, there's three things coming up right in a row here, all linked together here with Mahoney Creek being the thing that links them. This is the restoration project and I'll just turn it over to Rohat.
And so there are two locations for this project. One is Mahoney Creek at Woodland Hills. Some of you know that when the creek makes a sharp bend, it erodes the, the bank of the creek and it is getting dangerously close to the road. So we had been planning on this project for a long time, 2014, 15, we were applying for grants. We didn't unfortunately receive those grants, but with the rain, 2015 rain event, we kind of put this project in back burner, but obviously the creek has been eroding since then and, and our ARMI core permit was getting expired, so we asked for an extension on that permit and also we thought this is a good time to go out and, and get some bid prices. We did get really good bid prices compared to our engineers estimate, you can see the alternate A, which is, which includes both locations at Woodland Hills and Wilson Street. The estimate was 367,000, but the lowest bidder came out at 225,000. So we are recommending that we do take care of this erosion problem and, and put rip rap to stop further erosion on these two locations going forward. So that's 225,481. There is this overarching discussion that staff, including Laura, we were having about the Mahoney Creek Tributary, a, a grand plan for the whole creek. So we are, we are going to continue with that, but that's going to take, take time. By the time we come up with a plan, what needs to be done, but this is something that needs to be taken care of right now. Otherwise, we'll, we'll probably lose Woodland Hills Road or some other infrastructure into the creek. We don't want that to happen. So this project is, is to take care of those two locations.
Laura?
I also wanted to mention that the engineering department is going to be holding an open house event on Tuesday, April 23rd, from 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock to discuss both the Mahoney Creek Tributary at Woodland Hills Park project and also the Mahoney Creek at Wilson Street project. And that open house will be held in the Fox River Conference Room, which is just across the hall from council chambers.
Thank you.
So if I may, we know the contingency is covered in the budget on this one, which is very good. That was a good budget number. Did we have any history with CNH?
We, we do not, but we checked their references and they, they checked out pretty good.
And I see we're, we're giving it to Engineering Resources and Associates. They're not on the, the preferred list.
Right, and, and it, it goes and explained that we did send out our construction engineering contract or, or RFQ to our preferred consultant. I, they are shortlisted consultant. So everybody came back with saying they are busy. I'm not sure what that means. They, they all, we, we asked for some feedback, they said, we would like to get these projects six months in advance. And I can see from their standpoint, you know, they, they, they don't have construction engineers just sitting around waiting for City of PTV or somebody else just sending projects their way. They probably hire people as they get projects, you know. So it's a challenge, I think, from, from both end, from our end, to get projects to them six months in advance, which we don't know whether it's going to even go. I mean, the council doesn't even approve the budget till December.
But I can tell you, I was opposed to your shortlist, you know, when we had the discussions for this reason. I mean, now we're asking people that we had told previously, well, you're just not as good as the people we want. And I believe there's even a third person on here that's not even on the second list, right?
No, these, these are the, so, so we sent it six months.
I think we limited, as I said, I believe we limited our field of engineering pool when we did the shortlist and now we're telling, we're getting numbers from people that we told them, you're, you're the second choice. It's not a good position to be in, I don't believe.
This is, this is a common, this is not, what we are doing is not very uncommon in, in that sense that if we have to read 35 to 40 proposals every time we want to hire a consultant, that's a lot of tough time to go through. So if, if we look at only six, that's, that's a condensed number of consultants that we This is, this is a common, this is not, what we are doing is not very uncommon in that sense that if we have to read thirty-five to forty proposals every time we want to hire a consultant, that's a lot of stuff, time to go through. So if, if we look at only six, that's, that's a condensed number of consultants that we have to go through. And it does happen once in a while that, you know, they might be busy. Like the first contract that we just approved, Baxter and Woodman did propose on that. It's a big project and they like that. This is a short project. This is not gonna be more than six weeks. They would like to propose somebody who is gonna be busy for six months, not for six weeks. So it's a harder, these are harder type of projects where, you know, it's hard to go and find a consultant and for such a short amount of period of time.
It's still an important piece of work.
Absolutely.
Because we don't wanna lose that curb on Wintergreen Terrace, okay? And I know in the future, Gary and I had this conversation numerous times, we're looking to slow the flow and control the flow of water down the Mahoney Creek Tributary. And so, but that's gonna be three or four years in the future. But I still, I'm gonna make my point that we, you know, we should open it up to more people. I know we have three years now that we have this thing, but I'll be gone. But I think it's in the city's best interest to open it up. You don't have to take all of those, we don't have to take all of those thirty-five or twenty-five, whatever, people that come through. So I don't mean to go on now, it's too late in the night about this, but I just think this is something that came up again that I thought was not good for the City of Batavia.
Can I, can I make a comment real quick?
If you wish.
Because if we're gonna go, we did, go out for a formal process to develop the shortlist. And then if project XYZ comes along, in this case, Mahoney Creek, if we're going to open it up again, we can't get a pile of thirty and then discriminately say, well, we're not gonna look at these ten, but we're gonna look at the other ten.
Yeah.
We can't do that. So we're either gonna look at the pile of thirty for projects or we're gonna go out for a shortlist.
So then I'd look at the pile of thirty.
This is, we got to the shortlist as a balance between staff resources and the shortlist. I mean, we don't have the staff resources to go through thirty proposals for every single project that goes through the office. We simply don't have the resources to do that. And that takes a lot of time, a lot of man hours. Because it's not just one person. It's really, you know, the three, the staff engineer who's really responsible for the project, it's Andrea, it's Rahat and myself. There's at least a minimum of four of us who each has to go through those thirty proposals. And we sit as a group and evaluate, which is how we got to the shortlist process. The shortlist process has worked very well, except in this case, as Rahat just explained. It's kind of a small project and our shortlist contractors have all basically told us that they aren't interested in this project because it's so small.
But, but as Rahat just explained, the larger contractors weren't interested in this project because it was so small. So you might not have had thirty, you might have had two.
We wouldn't know unless we opened it up for everyone, right?
Right.
It is what it is. All right, let's move forward.
Scott?
Thank you. Sorry, Scott.
You're fine. In regards to communication of that meeting?
Yes.
Will that go out to that list that we collected from the?
Yes.
The creek?
Yes.
We will be emailing everybody.
The creek crew.
We'll be emailing everybody and also anybody who is within thousand feet of that project locations will be inviting them.
Great.
It's mostly more of update of construction. We will be shutting down, not shutting down, we will be reducing Wilson Street. So it's to communicate all that.
I think anything that goes on with Mahoney Creek at this point, we need to communicate.
I think it's intended to be a project specific meeting and not a Mahoney Creek planning meeting.
I get it. But we still need to let people know what's going on.
Yeah, definitely.
Rahat, you did send out cards, right? I thought I, that I received a card in the mail.
Yes, yes.
Regarding that.
I didn't.
Okay. That said, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution nineteen dash zero five zero. Wait a minute.
Yep, that's right.
That's the second one. Authorizing execution of the contract with CNH Escavating for two thousand and nineteen Stream Restoration Project, Mahoney Creek Tributary at Woodland Hills Park and Mahoney Creek at Wilson Street for an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-eight thousand, twenty-nine dollars and ten cents.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Saron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Why don't you jump right onto the next?
I'm gonna go right down to the next one and I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution nineteen dash zero fifty-one dash R, authorizing execution of task order number five for construction engineering with Engineering Resource Associates in the amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Second.
Six hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Still second.
I got six sixty-one on my, what I'm reading off the.
All right, which is it? Because the memo, the agenda says six fifty-one.
Is it six sixty-one or six fifty-one? Or can we get that ten dollars corrected by council?
We'll get the ten dollars corrected by council.
We can fix that by council.
Still second.
We'll have the right amount. Anybody have any questions? And they, they are already master services agreement, so we just task order with them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Sorry, both regularizing?
Seconded four times.
Scott seconded.
Motion by Wolf, second by Salvati. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Resolution dash, let's see, nineteen dash zero five three dash R, authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Batavia and Batavia Park District for citywide creek maintenance.
So this is, this is more to, more related to this project at this time because Park District is financially partnering with us and paying fifty percent towards this project. So this is just to have an agreement with Park District that they are gonna, they are gonna partner with us. They have been for the construction contract and also selecting the consultant. They have partnered with us. So it's just the financial participation of it.
Anybody have any questions? Gary?
Just to the title of this item, I mean, this says a citywide creek improvements project. We had discussions with their staff about doing like a generic agreement citywide. They subsequently, I think it was Monday, yesterday, came back and said they prefer just to make it project specific. So we'll come back, we'll make sure the title is correct and then the final language in the agreement is correct to make a project specific to this project.
So this will be for Mahoney Creek Project.
Mahoney Creek Tributary, right?
Tributary Project two thousand and nineteen.
The spirit is the same. They just wanna make it.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I think that's probably a good way to handle it.
Helen, I have a question.
Yes?
Regarding the cost of the four contracts we just approved, so the Park District will pay half of those contracts?
Yes.
For the one project? For the one.
For one part of it. That's adjacent to their property.
Oh, got it. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on what they were paying half of.
Any other questions? Make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution nineteen dash zero five three dash R, authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Batavia and the Batavia Park District for the Mahoney Creek Project two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Meitzler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next one's yours too, Alderman Wolf.
Okay, let me load that one up.
Resolution nineteen dash forty-eight R, authorizing a change order for the two thousand and nineteen sidewalk and curb and gutter replacement with Schroeder and Schroeder Incorporated for thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay. Per the request of the council, staff received a quote for the change order for the contractor on this year's sidewalk program, Schroeder and Schroeder. The quote is for removal of existing brick sidewalk and replacing it with concrete sidewalk on the west side of Batavia Avenue from First Street to Wilson Street. Brick enhancement similar to the other corners will be installed at the northwest corner of First Street and Batavia Avenue. Quote is in line with contract unit prices for similar work. Any questions?
I just wanna point out that it should be thirty-five thousand dollars. So that's what it says in the, in the memo.
In the memo and on here?
Not to exceed, right?
Not to exceed.
Mm-hmm. Is it different up there?
This, this status says thirty-seven thousand, five.
Thirty-five thousand.
Everywhere it's thirty-five.
Everywhere else. Okay.
Alan?
Yes?
Just to save time when we get down to projects, I think it's relevant to mention that the two thousand and nineteen, the regular sidewalk and curb replacement program began this week. We expect it'll take about four to six weeks to complete. We are repairing the sidewalk and/or curb in about a hundred and fifty locations and notice has been sent out to all the residents who would be affected by those projects.
Yeah, I think we'll mention that during the council meeting too. Any other comments? Make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution nineteen dash zero forty-eight dash R, authorizing change order for the two thousand and nineteen sidewalk and curb replacement program with Schroeder and Schroeder Incorporated for thirty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by O'Brien. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thanks, Alan. We've already done item number nineteen, so we'll go on to item twenty, which is resolution nineteen dash fifty-four dash R, authorizing execution of an agreement with Archon Construction Company for an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, forty-one dollars to perform directional boring for the Laurel Lynn Apartments and twenty-four oh one Hawks Drive. Alderman O'Brien.
Laurel Lynn Apartments have direct burial electric lines. They've been failing. It's not a good thing to do. They've done it years ago. So we're gonna, we're going to now have directional boring. We're gonna run conduits underground for the Laurel Lynn Apartments and for twenty-four oh one Hawks Drive. Our staff will pull the electric wires through the conduit and make the terminations. And that's pretty much it. It's pretty straightforward. It's just trying to give them more consistent electric power. Anything else? Did I miss anything on that, Rahat?
No, pretty much covered everything.
So anybody have questions or concerns? Any comments? Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Malay, second by Meitzler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You wanna talk about it or consent?
Consent.
Consent. Okay. Item twenty-one, project status. Laura, we don't have anything, right?
Thank you so much. The only thing that I would like to mention is that the city has launched an online application for overnight parking. As we know, and as the hour is quickly approaching, that there is no overnight parking on Batavia City Streets between the hours of one o'clock AM and six o'clock AM. From our city homepage, you can now complete an electronic overnight permit application. I think one of the greatest things about providing this to our citizens is that we did the whole thing in-house. You can buy this software as a package, but through our information systems and Todd Davis wrote the program to create this program for us. So kudos to him for that. And I hope that residents find it very useful. That is all.
That's it?
Sure.
Anybody have another?
Oh, Scott. Remind me, I'm sorry.
We wanted to talk about the sewer fee and then we had one of the properties that was annexing, wanted to connect to the city sewer.
Right.
And one of the things we were thinking about is this particular property has to, owns the center line of the road. And what we're thinking about is doing a kind of a swap to reduce the fee by about two thousand if they would dedicate the land for right of, public right of way. So we're thinking that that would be a equitable solution to make sure we get our right of way and reduce their fees for the sewer connection. So I wanted to run that by you, make sure nobody has any issues or objections with that.
I have no idea what we're talking about.
Creative problem.
So it's a, it's a, one of the properties that was recently annexed, their sewer is failing now. So now they would be obligated to pay for the hookup to the city sewer. They also own, they have property rights to the middle of the street, out in front of their house. It would be in our interest to own that part of their property that is in the, on the city street. And therefore, we thought that it might be an equitable swap to, in exchange for those fees, that they would deed us that portion of their property that runs to the middle of the street.
We can't take any action on that, right?
Yeah.
We can't take any action because it's not on the.
No, this is just direction to try.
Just direction, that you would be in favor of that.
We would have to approve a plat of dedication at some point anyway, so.
And I think that's a way to creatively look at making some of this stuff happen.
But we've not been in favor of waiving fees.
We aren't. We're keeping property. If people want to use property.
It's called parter.
We'll get something of value.
Yep.
Does anybody have another? Marty?
It just goes without saying to the police and the fire and staff for Saturday and Monday, they did a fantastic job.
They really did.
Yep.
Lastly, I just wanna recognize the three aldermen that were recently elected. Thank you for attending all these meetings you've been attending and thank you for your future service. As you can see, sometimes it's not easy, so.
This is a quick one.
All right. Move your adjournments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Salvati, second by Stark.
Aye.